Whatever you like.
They're in order and they always get screwed up when I let someone else. So, I'll just come stand right here.
Perfect.
These are not, they're not showing.
Okay, then maybe just keep, do you want me to hold?
I have to give him the rabbit tail.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll take your seats, please, and put your cellphones on silent, or airplane mode, or whatever. The November 20th, 2019 meeting of the City Council's called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel 2. Close caption for hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications may view this program in high definition on channel 1002 and in standard definition on channel 2. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, on the Go Vegas app. The City Council, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during our meeting today, please evacuate using the exit at the rear of the chambers going out to the mess and then proceed out the double doors to the terrace and go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation in public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online in the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff. And please note if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a new flash parking self-validation machine is located in the foyer between the City Council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. However, if you don't have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for our invocation this morning, given so wonderfully, as always, by our Reverend Robert Fowler, Victory Missionary Baptist Church, and remain standing for our pledge. Good morning, and thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Councilman Creer.
Good morning, sir.
Blessing to see each and every one of you. I pass to Victory Baptist Church. You're all welcome at any time. Would you bow with me, please? Eternal God and Heavenly Father, we thank you and we praise you for this wonderful day, how refreshing it is today to wake up and to feel the cool zephyrs, the rain upon our bodies and our buildings and our beings. We thank you for that refreshment in our city. Our grass needs it, our city needs it, and we're grateful to you for it. We thank you for this day that you've given us health and strength to live. We're so proud that it wasn't the alarm clock that woke us up this morning, but the touch of your hand, and we bless you for that. Thank you, God, for our City Council. All of us have to serve you, but we serve others by their choice. And these individuals have been chosen by our city to stand over our city, and we're proud of them, and we thank you for them. We also pray, God, for their families that support them, that they would always be understanding and always be supportive of the times that they have to be away from home and the endeavors that take their attention away from family. Their job, their task, is daunting. We live in a world, God, where there's harsh judgment over anybody that would seek to serve, and I pray that our city would not be harsh in our judgment over our council and the decisions that they have to make unfairly. We also live in a world, God, where discrimination seems to be raising its head as though it is the monster of the day, but we know that you are well capable of handling monsters. Handle it like you handled Goliath. And as they measure today with the fiscal affairs of our city, we pray, God, that you would use them and give them strategy and wisdom that would bring not only peace but prosperity to all of us. We ask these things in your name, and everyone that agreed said amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We'll come on down for our ceremonials now. Good, how are you? This is soccer day in Las Vegas, I think. Mr. Wriggleman, where would you suggest everybody go that can't sit? Okay. We could have some of the students and athletes come up front here, front row, and for those of you in the second row, could you get closer together so we can free up some of the seats? And we have a front row over here, you can use that as well. Do you see any more seats? And then I think for the rest of you, unfortunately, you know what I may do, because I know you all want to be back in school, right? Ready, go back in the class, you know? I just, oh, it is good, I know that. I had children grow up your age. You'd rather spend the day and stay here and have it at the very end, about 4:30 or 5:00, right? But I think, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna pull it forward so that you and your parents and the teachers and coaches that have come with you, unless there's a problem, where's, no problem, no problem for you? No problem, Mr. Wriggleman, if I bring it forward? Okay. So, we're gonna start off for our first ceremonial item, we're gonna turn it right over to our lucky ward for councilperson, Stavros Anthony. Sorry, but you'll be back another time.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good morning, everyone, how are you? Okay, that was not that great, but we'll continue on anyway. Okay. Today, it is my honor to recognize the 16 local teams that won their divisions in the recent City of Las Vegas Mayor's Cup. So if you look around, these are the best soccer teams and the best soccer players in the City of Las Vegas. On the weekend of October 25 through 27, the City of Las Vegas and the Downtown Soccer Club hosted the Las Vegas Mayor's Cup International Youth Soccer Tournament for soccer players 9 to 16 years old. At this point, I would like to invite Bob Brier to come down representing the Las Vegas Downtown Soccer Club. Where's Bob? There he is, come on down, give him a round of applause. 505 teams participated in the event over three days, and teams from around the United States, along with 45 teams from Brazil, Canada, Costa Rica, Ecuador, Japan, and Mexico, played in the Mayor's Cup. It's now in its 20th year, the Mayor's Cup is presently the largest international tournament in the country. We're additionally excited that the Mayor's Cup for the older players will again take place over the weekend in February 2020, and over 100 foreign teams from around the world are expected to participate. The economic impact of this soccer tournament that weekend is $27 million. The finals are played at the City of Las Vegas Betty Wilson Soccer Complex, located at Lake Mead in Tenaya in the Great Ward Ford. The youth soccer facilities we have in Las Vegas are considered some of the top soccer fields in the nation, and we're proud to showcase these facilities in the Mayor's Cup. At this point, I'd like to ask Bob from the Downtown Soccer Club, our major partner, to talk a little bit more about the tournament.
Thank you, I thank you all so much for coming out. It's so great to see all the young faces here and the champions, right? Everybody's a champion that's here, right? Good time. You know, it's quite an accomplishment to be able to come here and sit in these chambers and be recognized, because there's so many teams that compete to do it, and it's wonderful when we see teams of all different skill levels. We have some of the best teams in the country that play in the tournament, we also have some of the teams that are just starting to develop, and they all have a chance to come and win and be part of our tournament. So, it's so great to see everybody. I'm so glad that you got to participate in this, and we hope to see you again next time.
Well, great, you're excellent partners, so thank you for everything you do, appreciate it. I also want to recognize our Director of Parks and Recreation, Greg Wetzel. Greg, where are you? Greg, oh, right back there, put your hand up again. It's Greg and his team from the City of Las Vegas that make sure this soccer tournament goes off without a hitch, and the fields are in great shape, and I think they do a great job making sure we have this tournament. Now, it is time to recognize the teams. Again, keep in mind, 505 teams from around the world competed in this tournament, and our local Las Vegas teams that are here today won their divisions. That is absolutely unbelievable. So, we're going to, first of all, I'm gonna call the team's name, they're gonna come down here, they're gonna get a picture taken with the mayor and the city council. I have a certificate signed by the mayor and city council for each player with their name on it. We'll get a picture taken, you'll get on television, and we're just gonna go breeze right through this, because I know the mayor wants to get you back to school. So, we're gonna go through this really quick. Too bad you're going back to school.
So, but if we can move forward, I think, or push it back, and then we can...
Yeah. All right, ready? Okay, our first team is Boys Under Nine Adidas Group, Inter United, Coach Ismael Laguna Medina. Come on down.
Hey, guys. Unfortunately, our coach had a minor accident today.
That's okay, come on in, we'll get a picture taken with you. All right, squeeze in.
So, let's have everybody get over to the center, congratulations, Coach. All right, let's go back to the plane.
Oh, okay.
Okay, everybody look at the picture. Great, thank you.
Congratulations. The Boys Under Nine Rotary of Las Vegas Group, Prime SC-11 MDC, Coach Michael Carpenter, come on down. Congratulations. The Boys Under 10 Adidas Group Division, Inter United 2010, Coach Ismael Laguna Medina, come on down.
Congratulations.
Got your trophy, all right.
Love that trophy. Good job. Adelante. Good job.
All right. All right, congratulations. Coach, make sure you get your certificates. The Boys Under 14 Rotary of Las Vegas Group, Athletico Envy Academy Red, Coach Il Dahan. Are they here? Come on down. All right, congratulations. All right, the Boys Under 14 Gatorade Group, Prime SC-06 LPM, Coach Liam McCain. Good job, Coach. All right. There you go. All right, congratulations. All right, the Boys Under 15 Rotary of LV Group Tactical FC-05 RJ, Coach Ryan Jenkins. Come on down. There they are.
Do you know him?
Yes.
Good job. All right, squeeze in.
Take a knee?
Yeah, take a knee, there you go. All right, congratulations. Boys Under 15 Nevada Counselor Core Group, winner is the Downtown Las Vegas Soccer Club 2005 Navy, the coach is Colin Tabor, but Roger Tabor will represent him. Roger, thank you. Come on down. Okay, good job. All right, congratulations. Okay, the Boys Under 16 Chapman Auto Group Division, the winner is the Downtown Las Vegas Soccer Club 2004 Gold, the coach is Curtis Shell, and I believe they are not here, so give them a nice round of applause. The Girls Under 10 Chapman Group, LVSA 10 Red, Coach Angel Laba, come on down. There they are. Congratulations. Girls Under 11 Rotary of Las Vegas Group, the winner is the Prime SC-09 CCH, Coach Chris Hooman. Good job. All right, there you go, come on down. Congratulations. All right, the Girls Under 12 Adidas Division, the winner is the Prime SC-08 DTM, Coach Dean Maza. All right, congratulations. The Girls Under 12 Rotary of Las Vegas Division, Albion SCLV 08 Premier TK, Coach Travis Colmos. All right, congratulations. The Girls Under 13 Rotary of LV Division, Vegas United 07 MT, Coach Matthew Turnspeed. Come on down.
Turn up speed, turn up speed.
This is well coordinated, this is a lot. I would've lost my place, I could do it.
Good job, congratulations. All right, congratulations, ladies. The Girls Under 14 Chapman Auto Group, the winner is the Albion SCLV 06 Academy MM, Coach Mike Malani. Congratulations. That should be all the teams that are here, correct? Okay, we had two teams that could not be here, the Girls Under 13 Auto Group Division, the Heat FC-07 ECNL, Coach Barbara, and the Girls Under 16 Chapman Auto Group Division, LVSA 04 National League, Coach Madrid. Please give them a nice round of applause. And once again, the greatest soccer players in Las Vegas. Give it up for them.
Okay, how many buses did we come in? Are they all lined up in front of City Hall? Okay, as orderly and wonderfully as you came in, we're gonna ask you, just go out the same beautiful way. We look forward to seeing you all back here as you get older and compete up next February and then the following year in October, so good luck, we're so proud of all of you. So wonderful, congratulations. At the end, I told him at the end, thank you, remind me again.
That was a good idea, getting them out.
Yeah, thank you, no, beautiful, thanks.
You know, we're going to China tomorrow, in two weeks. Yeah, so you don't need me in between, do we? Okay. Great, thanks so much.
Roger, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Every year gets better and better and better.
You know, I've got two things to share. We broke into three new countries in February. And listen to this. It's the first time we'll have every single continent represented the same tournament in February. Yeah, except for Antarctica.
Does he get to go with you?
No, no, no. I mean, they're all coming here February.
No, I saw that, but you said you're leaving for China.
Yes, sir. Who has the plans for that? For which team?
Long flights. Awesome. Awesome. Goodbye. Okay, everyone, for those of us who remain, if you'll take your seats and somebody's ringing or something. Sounds like an alarm clock. Time to get up. They really want their... There they go. Wonderful. Congratulations. We're just so proud of you. And you represent Las Vegas so beautifully. We're just really so proud of what good sportsmen you are and sportswomen or sports ladies or sports girls. It's awesome. Just awesome. Okay, Coach, can you do that outside so we can continue on, please? Thank you. Thank you. We'll see you in February. We're proud of you. You represent us wherever you travel. So nice. Good moms and dads there too. Oop, look at that. Nobody left. Thank you. Thank you for sitting there. It makes us feel better. Goodness gracious. Okay, for our next ceremonial item, I want to ask our Parks and Recreation Director Greg Weitzel to join us here at the podium, please. Our employees strive to live our values of being kind, committed, and smart, and they build our community, make life better for us all. I'm proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Nicole Korwitz. So Nicole, come on down. You are obviously loved and appreciated. You brought your team. So proud of you. So proud. So let me tell you about... Oh, wow. Oh, they all have your faces ready too. Awesome. Awesome. You have to take a picture of it going the other way, please, Shane. I mean, okay. All right, so do it one more time, Shane. Can you get a picture? And two of them are backwards. That's really smart. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about Nicole. She joined, thank you very much Shane, joined our city in 2000... Oh, are you the best. 2006 and is a Recreation Coordinator in our Parks and Recreation Department. She works at Veterans Memorial Community Center in Ward 2 and exemplifies our city values. Nicole encourages everyone and helps to find their potential. Recently, a young boy visiting the center was overheard making statements about harming himself. Nicole immediately went to speak with the boy and then his parents so that this young resident could get the help he needs. She has since developed a relationship with the family and follows up often and has helped to ensure that the child has school supplies and the needs are met for him. Nicole, thank you so much for going the extra mile to protect this youngster and for being a true ambassador for our city. And we want to present you with this award, if you would, Mayor Protem. The award. Thank you very much. And remind you that you will be featured on the signage outside City Hall. So now, Mr. Weitzel, where are you? There you are. Let's give it to you first. You look very dapper. How's that for Parks and Rec? All GQ all the way.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations Nicole. I think I speak for our entire team and the community to say congratulations to a job well done. Thank you. You know, Nicole, I started in July, but I've... You know, right away you invited me out to the center, and I've been out there multiple times and I get to see your work firsthand. And I'm just so very proud of you. You're an awesome leader. Your team supports you. But most importantly, the community responds so well to the programs and activities at Veterans. So congratulations once again.
Okay, Nicole, you can't escape without saying something, especially with such an adoring team. Do it well for them.
I don't want to drop it. Because I'm clumsy. Okay, so anybody who knows me, good morning, knows that this is going to be really tough for me to get through without tears. But I'm going to do my best. I'm going to prove them well. So first off, I'd like to say I'm grateful for receiving Employee of the Month. I'd like to thank the committee for finding me worthy. I cannot forget the support that has been offered to me by my coworkers and supervisors. They have afforded me an amazing work environment. While this award addresses me, their efforts in making this possible should not go unrecognized. I also recognize the accomplishments of each of the teams that I've had the pleasure to work with over the years, but especially the work accomplishments of the Vets Team. They contribute immensely to my growth and the success of our center. If it was up to me, every employee who follows their passion and serves the community with love and kindness as they do on a daily basis should be recognized. Thank you for not only being an amazing team, but family. I believe that we are here for each other, not against each other. Everything comes in an understanding for me that you are a gift in my life, whoever you are, whatever our differences are. During my 22 years, both full-time and part-time, the city has afforded me many opportunities to grow and serve people. I've had the pleasure of working with many of our wards and meeting and serving many of our constituents from diverse backgrounds. If you are lucky, you will have the opportunity to find one person who brightens your day and inspires you. But because of this job, I have been blessed with more people in my life that I call friends and family than I could ever imagine. Here goes the tough part. I wish that "thank you" and "I love you" could accordingly express my feelings for my family's patience and understanding throughout the years. The love and understanding that my husband Jim shows me on a daily basis is more than any girl could ever ask for. Coach, thank you for supporting my crazy ideas, which I have a lot of, late nights, which I have more of, and inability to say no all the time and not taking no for an answer. This is your superpower. Ty and Cory, I never wanted to let you down. I always wanted to set the best example for you. Thank you for sharing me with the community because of your understanding, you made me the best mama and person I could be. Cory, thank you for being my ride or die all the time, always ready to give your time, support, and talents. Joyce, you always both big time. Ty and Tiff, making me a Grammy is the best title I've ever had in my life. Thank you for always supporting and putting up with my craziness. I love you all more than you'll ever know, and thank you for exceeding all my expectations. I'm so proud of you in every way. Since I became an employee for the city of Las Vegas, I have been driven by our mission statement, which requires that we love and serve this city. I can't thank you enough for letting me do exactly what I love every day. Thank you.
Beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. Family, not city family. Family, family, if you're here, could you stand up? Oh, how beautiful. Beautiful. Thank you. Congratulations. We're so grateful to you. Thank you very much for all that you did. So let's get a picture. And thank you, team, and thank you, family. Wow. What a great group. Made us cry almost too. So thank you. Thank you, team. For our next item, it's a really special pleasure to recognize a group of people who are making this a caring and compassionate city. Earlier this morning, a great friend of the city's and of ours, Guard Jamison, and the Compassionate Cities Team gave out awards to several community members who are out making a difference. So this is a community where compassion is alive and thriving, and today's award recipients have made a difference in areas including human trafficking, helping the homeless, education and addiction recovery, to name but a few of the award categories. These winners were recognized at a breakfast earlier this morning, but I'd like to ask them to stand for a round of applause here in city chambers. And I would like to invite Guard Jamison to please stand, in fact, come down here for a second. You always are a man of just beautiful words, and absolutely, we thank you for how you've been such an inspiration to our city and humanity. So, give us the word.
Well, I want to say there was a lot of love in the room this morning, and love comes from compassion. And I noticed one of your councilwomen, I think she plays soccer. But I want to also say I'm a little worried because you brought international teams here, and it looks like Las Vegas won all the awards. So, I'm a little concerned. So what I want to tell you all is compassion is the hope of the future. And this morning, we were in a cafe named what?
The Now Cafe.
The Now, but also there was hope in that cafe. And it was a few years ago that there was a gentleman named Oscar, who was the mayor. And he said, "Let's start something called the Mayor's Interfaith Initiative." And that Mayor's Interfaith Initiative with Pastor Troy... I don't know if Pastor Troy's here. Pastor Troy, stand up. Pastor Troy and Aaron and many others really moved the compassion dial forward. So we want to give thanks for Oscar. We want to give thanks for the Mayor's Interfaith Initiative. Second, there was a wonderful person named the Dalai Lama, who said, "If you want to be happy, be compassionate. If you want others to be happy, be compassionate." And so when I walked into her office and I asked, "Would you be willing to consider Las Vegas as part of a network of 450 cities globally who are part of the global compassionate network?" I think it took her less than a nanosecond to say, "Of course." And so we are so blessed to have this wonderful lady as our mayor for the third term. I'm so excited about that because what she brings with her is a heart of gold and compassion. And hopefully, the city council will embed compassion into the very culture and fabric of this community so that it's never lost. And that it's always the filter through which we make our decisions, through which we engage each and every person in each and every day. So, thank you, Mayor.
You're an inspiration to us all. Thank you, Guard. Even if there are more, we'd love to have them. So if you would, and we'll get... Council, if you're... Come around the podium, we'll get them up. Okay. Okay, well, maybe we'll push this back again? Okay. Okay, here we go. Oh, thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Wonderful.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you so much. How are you? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Beautiful. Congratulations. Beautiful. Beautiful. Now I get to see it, really. Ah, Mari. How are you there? Okay, you're just wonderful. We just love you. Now, turn and get a picture. Okay. Can you get everybody? Oh. Boy, are you tough. Great, thank you. And thank you for the multitude of ways you share your compassion for everyone. It's beautiful. Year after year, always. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Mayor, you lead by example. So thank you. Thank you. We love you.
Thank you. Take care.
Judge Sullivan is here, visiting us.
The saint of saints. Family part. The man who's always there for all of our families. Thank you. Yes, can you come up? Come up, come up.
With great youthful eyes. How can anybody miss his wife?
All right. This has been Judge Sullivan's passion for a lifetime. We're so grateful. Okay, again, look in the back if you would, to the pink shirt. Thanks, Mari, for doing that. Judge, thank you. Check the ratings, hopefully, send for us. Everybody fine?
Everybody's fine.
Take care. What a great memory. Thank you. We appreciate everything that you're doing. Just wonderful. Okay, I think our last one is Councilwoman Seaman, right? Wonderful day in the city of Las Vegas. It's just so nice to have positive things happening because certainly, it's a very challenging time in the world. And for our final item this morning, we have two. In fact, I'm going to let you close, as a matter of fact, if we could. Councilwoman Seaman, if you'll go first, and then I'll take it back and give it to Councilwoman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am very proud to recognize our own Parks and Recreation Department for their outstanding work on Camp Kindness. So can I get the Recreation Director Greg Weitzel to come back up? You're popular today. So some of you may be wondering about the beautiful display of trees in our lobby. Well, those trees are created by the wonderful young people of Camp Kindness. I also know that we all much very appreciated the special kindness wreaths that were placed on our council doors. And so in the spring of 2018, the American Camp Association sent out a call for support for Camp Kindness Day. The City of Las Vegas Department of Parks and Recreation answered with 12 weeks of the kindness curriculum and activities for their campers. This ceremonial today will recognize the great work that their camps have done over the last two years, teaching kindness through simple, repeatable, high-impact ways that their campers and staff members continued throughout their daily lives, carrying them to their homes and communities. Camp Kindness evolved into a Kindness is Contagious campaign, which has had a significant impact on the communities we serve. They have seen a decrease in behavioral challenges and an increase in compassion and positive behaviors among their participants in their programs. I would now like to show a very short video on the Camp Kindness program.
I pledge to be fearless and kind.
To be a leader in change.
To use kind words and know that violence is never the answer.
To stand up for each other and with each other.
To be brave enough to take action.
To stand up for those who need my help.
To know that only takes me to make a difference.
And to make a difference whenever I can.
Wherever I can, because I can.
I stand up for being kind, committed, and smart.
Compassionate and caring.
Being self-aware.
Having gratitude.
Social awareness.
And respect.
Demonstrating self-management.
Being generous.
Responsible.
And fair.
We pledge to be courageous in our kindness each and every day. We had to write what we stood up for, and I wrote, "Love, peace, kindness, friendships, and equality for all, no matter what the race, color, voice, shape, or background." Because we all deserve to be loved for our uniqueness. Love conquers hate. I am no longer accepting the things that I cannot change. I am changing the things I cannot accept.
So thank you for the program of Kindness is Contagious. So we would like to award you with this, and we would like you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Just have a few talking points. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Seaman, for your support of this program. And staff as well. Sure, thank you. That'd be great. Being smart, committed, and kind are the core values of the City of Idaho.
Being smart, committed and kind are the core values of the City of Idaho Falls. I am so far, the City of Las Vegas. I am, that is such a bad folk problem. The Kindness Campaign began last year during our summer camp program. It was such a huge success, we decided to keep the momentum going during the summer's camp. So, more than 1,400 campers took the Kindness pledge and participated in 11 weeks of kindness curriculum and activities. And we love those kindness trees out in the council, outside the council chambers. And once again, I want to thank you, the staff, the campers and the council and mayor for your support of this campaign.
Thank you. You want to say more?
No.
Okay. It's beautiful. And if you know the background of Mr. Weitzel, you would know what a kind, caring and compassionate man he has been his whole life, and we're very proud that you're part of our team. Thank you.[651.16][651.16](Applause). Wonderful. You know, everything that comes before us has made it possible for us to get where we are today, and we stand on the shoulders of great people and kind, good people, who cared for our community and did something to make life better for somebody else. And Councilman Krier really has something with which he wants to make sure we're all, well, you just take it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I know this was last minute, but death is last minute as well. It was not agendized. But I just wanted to recognize someone we lost in our community, a pioneer in our community who recently passed, a gentleman by the name of QB Bush. He was born in May 7th, 1931, from Fordice, Arkansas. And he moved out to Las Vegas after serving in the Korean War in 1954. And he was one of, started as a porter at the Sands Hotel, and then he went on to become a dealer. And one of the first African-Americans to work in the casino business. As you know, they desegregated the Strip in 1960 with the Moulin Rouge Agreement. And he was one of the first persons to work there. Started, he worked also at the Moulin Rouge. He worked at the Town Tavern, worked at the El Morocco. And he was the first person, black person, to own a dealing school, and one of the first persons to work, as I say, on the Las Vegas Strip. Just a pioneer, and he was, you know, he would provide the community with peanuts and sweet potatoes, and he was nicknamed the Sweet Potato Man. But I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him in our community. Please keep him and his family in your prayers. And we have lost someone who paved the way for many of us in my community to be where we are today, including myself. So, thank you, Mayor, once again, and condolences to his family.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you. You're an inspiration to us all. Thank you, Gard.[816.13][816.13](Applause). Even if there are more, we'd love to have them. So, if you would, and we'll get, council, if you're, come around the podium, we'll get them up. Okay. Okay, well, maybe we'll push this back again?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Here we go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Okay. I think our last one is Councilwoman Seaman, right? Okay. Wonderful day in the city of Las Vegas. It's just so nice to have positive things happening because certainly, it's a very challenging time in the world. And for our final item this morning, we have two. In fact, I'm going to let you close, as a matter of fact, if we could. Councilwoman Seaman, if you'll go first, and then I'll take it back and give it to Councilman Krier. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I am very proud to recognize our own Parks and Recreation Department for their outstanding work on Camp Kindness.[845.13][845.13](Applause). So, can I get the Recreation Director, Greg Weitzel, to come back up? You're popular today.[848.13][848.13](Laughter). Yes. So, some of you may be wondering about the beautiful display of trees in our lobby. Well, those trees are created by the wonderful young people of Camp Kindness. I also know that we all much very appreciated the special kindness wreaths that were placed on our council doors. And so, in the spring of 2018, the American Camp Association sent out a call for support for Camp Kindness Day. The City of Las Vegas Department of Parks and Recreation answered with 12 weeks of the kindness curriculum and activities for their campers. This ceremonial today will recognize the great work that their camps have done over the last two years, teaching kindness through simple, repeatable, high-impact ways that their campers and staff members continued throughout their daily lives, carrying them to their homes and communities. Camp Kindness evolved into a Kindness is Contagious campaign, which has had a significant impact on the communities we serve. They have seen a decrease in behavioral challenges and an increase in compassion and positive behaviors among their participants in their programs. I would now like to show a very short video on the Camp Kindness program.
I pledge to be fearless and kind.
To be a leader in change.
To use kind words and know that violence is never the answer.
To stand up for each other and with each other.
To be brave enough to take action.
To stand up for those who need my help.
To know that it only takes me to make a difference.
And to make a difference whenever I can.
Wherever I can, because I can.
I stand up for being kind, committed and smart.
Compassionate and caring.
Being self-aware.
Having gratitude.
Social awareness.
And respect.
Demonstrating self-management.
Being generous.
Responsible.
And fair.
We pledge to be courageous in our kindness each and every day. We had to write what we stood up for, and I wrote, "Love, peace, kindness, friendships, inequality for all, no matter what the race, color, voice, shape or background." Because we all deserve to be loved for our uniqueness. Love conquers hate. I am no longer accepting the things that I cannot change. I am changing the things I cannot accept.
So, thank you for the program of Kindness is Contagious. So, we would like to award you with this, and we would like you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you.[898.81][898.81](Applause). Let's have a few talking points. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Seaman, for your support of this program, and staff as well. Sure, thank you. That'd be great.[904.81][904.81](Laughter). Being smart, committed and kind are the core values of the City of Idaho Falls. I am so far, the City of Las Vegas. I am, that is such a bad folk problem. The Kindness Campaign began last year during our summer camp program. It was such a huge success, we decided to keep the momentum going during the summer's camp. So, more than 1,400 campers took the Kindness pledge and participated in 11 weeks of kindness curriculum and activities. And we love those kindness trees out in the council, outside the council chambers. And once again, I want to thank you, the staff, the campers and the council and mayor for your support of this campaign.[916.81][916.81](Applause).
Thank you. Do you want to say more?
No.
Okay. It's beautiful. And if you know the background of Mr. Weitzel, you would know what a kind, caring and compassionate man he has been his whole life, and we're very proud that you're part of our team. Thank you.[925.81][925.81](Applause). You know, everything that comes before us has made it possible for us to get where we are today, and we stand on the shoulders of great people and kind, good people, who cared for our community and did something to make life better for somebody else. And Councilman Krier really has something with which he wants to make sure we're all, well, you just take it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I know this was last minute, but death is last minute as well. It was not agendized. But I just wanted to recognize someone we lost in our community, a pioneer in our community who recently passed, a gentleman by the name of QB Bush. He was born in May 7th, 1931, from Fordice, Arkansas. And he moved out to Las Vegas after serving in the Korean War in 1954. And he was one of, started as a porter at the Sands Hotel, and then he went on to become a dealer. And one of the first African-Americans to work in the casino business. As you know, they desegregated the Strip in 1960 with the Moulin Rouge Agreement. And he was one of the first persons to work there. Started, he worked also at the Moulin Rouge. He worked at the Town Tavern, worked at the El Morocco. And he was the first person, black person, to own a dealing school, and one of the first persons to work, as I say, on the Las Vegas Strip. Just a pioneer, and he was, you know, he would provide the community with peanuts and sweet potatoes, and he was nicknamed the Sweet Potato Man. But I just wanted to take a moment to recognize him in our community. Please keep him and his family in your prayers. And we have lost someone who paved the way for many of us in my community to be where we are today, including myself. So, thank you, Mayor, once again, and condolences to his family.[955.81][955.81](Applause).
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of the program. Thank you.
We're going to take your photos.
Yes. We're going to take our photos, UNLV.
Oh.
Perfect.
Not in more reach. We're trying to keep.
Thank you, Councilman. We certainly join with you in that expression. So, that concludes our ceremonials, and I know the human beings here have to wait for technology to switch over. We're already switched. So, we will be 10 minutes, and at 10 o'clock sharp, we'll be back and start the rest of
Okay, we're ready. We're back on with Agenda Number Nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific agenda items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at one minute, so please do come forward. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10. Business items for possible action, any items from the 9:00 AM session that council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor, pro tem, please.
Madam Mayor, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn or stricken. Item number 35, a new compliance permit for a retail marijuana store for Essense Tropicana LLC, DBA Essense at 2307 South Las Vegas Boulevard. The action requested requests by staff to strike it, and that will be my motion.
Thank you, there is a motion. And please vote and please post. Thank you, the motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the October 16, 2019 regular city council meeting. Mayor, pro tem, may I have a motion on those minutes, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the October 16, 2019 city council meeting.
Thank you very much, this motion on Agenda Item 11, please vote and please post. That motion carries also, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 12. Items 12 through 42, with the exception of 35, on a consent agenda considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, that may be enacted in one motion. Note a correction to Item 19, as it did not reflect a Ward and should have indicated Ward Five with Councilman Creer. Note also that the record should reflect my abstention to Items Number 21 through 25, because they pertain to medical marijuana-related businesses, and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I'll be voting on all other items. Are there any other items that the council wishes to bring forward?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Item 19 involves the Plaza Hotel and Casino. My wife works there, and I am going to disclose that, and our city attorney says I can vote, so I'll be voting on it.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mayor, pro tem, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items Number 12 through 42, with the exception of Item 35.
Thank you very much, there's a motion to approve, please vote. And now, those motions carry right there. Okay, we are pulling forward Agenda Item 46, and 78, is it 10? Yes, 78 and 79, because Councilman Creer has to leave for the airport, and we want to make sure that his agenda is the items he's present for. So we'll start with Agenda Item 46. Discussion for possible action regarding the review of conditions for a nonprofit club general on-sale license for American Legion Post 10, Inc., DBA American Legion Post 10, Inc. at 1905 8th Street. This is in Ward Five with Councilman Creer, and, good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Mayor, and members of the city council. For the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. Today, American Legion Post Number 10 is before you to request a review of conditions on their nonprofit club general on-sale liquor license. To give you a little bit of a background here, this location originally started operation as a VFW post way back in 1968. They held a nonprofit club liquor license until May of 2008. The VFW post lost its club charter when the VFW State Commander revoked the club charter due to public safety concerns and allegations of missing money. The club reopened as American Legion Post Number 10 on October 29, 2012, but without a liquor license. They appeared before city council in 2013 and 2015 to reinstate that liquor license, but were denied. But American Legion Post appeared before you on March 6, 2019, and a temporary liquor license was granted with 20 conditions. Those 20 conditions that currently exist, I'd like to submit for the record, and that license is temporary until March 9 of 2020. But they are here before you today to request two conditions be amended. The first one is Condition Number One. The condition right now states that their hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and they'd like to have that changed to be extended until 11:59 PM at night, right before midnight. Condition Number Seven is another condition they'd also like to amend, and that changes the security guard requirement. Currently, the condition says that has to be a minimum of two security personnel, which are state-licensed on the premises of the business when they are open. They would like to change that. What they would like to do is have a minimum of one security guard from opening to 7:00 PM in the evening, and a minimum of two security personnel on the business premises from 7:00 PM until closing. One would be monitoring the exterior parking lot, and one would be stationed at the entrance of the establishment. A third security guard would be added whenever the number of members and guests exceeds 100 persons. I'd like to also point out that Condition Number 18 requires that a city council review be required no later than one year after that temporary license was issued, prior to the issuance of a permanent license. So this meeting can serve for that purpose today, or if you'd like, and I would recommend if you do agree to the proposed amendments, that we do have that meeting sometime at the end of February or the first meeting in March. I should also state that the Department of Planning does not have any concerns about these proposed amendments. Mr. Grady Hayes, who is the Director of Operations of American Legion Post 10, is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good morning to you and councilpeople, and to my personal councilperson, for Councilman Creer. I want to thank the Planning Department and the city for all the assistance and help given us over this period of time. We accepted the conditions initially because we wanted to prove that we could meet those conditions. We're at a point now where we want to expand, and expand some of the beautification things we had discussed before, and also some of the veteran programs that are available to be developed by utilizing some of the revenue that we're not able to generate now because of some of the restrictions. So that's just the conditions that we're asking for now. If we can relieve those restrictions, we can fulfill some of the promises we made to the city in March.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're just really delighted that things are going so well, because I know it was a long, hard road to get where we are today, and certainly took the diligence and caring of all of you and your members to get us here, so thank you. So any questions, comments first? Councilwoman Diaz, anything? Mayor, pro tem? Okay, before everybody says "no," but I say "yes." If I could ask Councilman Creer to take them by parts, because I'm fine with the first comment that Ms. McElhone brought up, which was, the very first was, if you'd repeat it, so I make sure you're saying what I am totally in favor of.
Madam Mayor, that is to change their closing hours from 10:00 PM in the evening to 11:59 PM, one minute before midnight.
Okay, I am very much, and this is just suggestions from me, Councilman, and I absolutely regard your assessment as the final that I will follow. I'm very much in favor of moving that from 10 to 11:59, that one, and I would hope that depending upon how you take it, whether we do it all together, because it depends on what you say, or take them individually. The second piece is, safety is first, always, in everything we do. Safety, safety, safe, safety. And I think many people get out of work and would like to avail themselves as the opportunity to be at the Legion, but after 4:00. And so I would like to recommend that we have the strongest security piece go not from, where is it now, or what they're requesting?
Madam Mayor, they're requesting the change happen at 7:00 PM, so one security guard until 7:00 PM in the evening, and then two.
Okay, so my recommendation would be 4:00 PM, and so we have two security guards then, and that the review be again in a year, but I'm sure if anything untoward happens, you would be back to us anyway, so.
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so that's really my suggestion, knowing too, it gets dark now about 4:15, 4:30. You may look at it again once we're into the daylight savings, but I'm just always safety and security bound. So with that, since no one else has comments, it's yours, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. First, let me say that from the moment that the post has come to my office, since I've been in office, they've been nothing but professional, they've been well-prepared, and has never not taken ownership of the previous challenges of their predecessors. And I say their predecessors, because it was a different organization that was running the post. The, for whatever reason, there were challenges, and it was the national body that actually took their accreditation, for lack of a better term, and not the city. And so, but since then, I know they have plans to do some good things. They've been great stewards, they've gotten some partnerships with Home Depot.
Yes.
On, to, already, to do some work in the backyard, there's work on the physical structure with the fence, with the pavement, and that has shown a level of commitment towards bringing it back. I know, spoken to Bolden Air Command, who oversees the area, I know that they have said you guys have been working well with them.
And we want to thank Captain Yaz for her help and guidance.
I agree, Captain Yatomi has been a great partner, but you guys have been a great partner with them. And so, we, there are other lodges in our ward, and don't confuse one with the other, this one is, it stands on its own merits, and I think is deserving of the changes that are presented to us today. I will concur about the security, we haven't had an issue, but maybe we split the difference. I think 7:00 o'clock might be kind of late, because people do get out of work, as the mayor stated, maybe we split the difference between 5:00 instead of 7:00 and see how that goes. But also, the time change, I don't have a problem with. And so, would it be possible to take, you want to take them one at a time, whomever's staffing this, or is it Mary?
I would say.
Or you want to just take them at once? I mean, take them both, to approve the condition to change from, to stay open until 11:59 PM, and also from the hours of operation starting at 5:00 PM with the security guard.
Okay, so let's take that and pass that.
Okay.
To move it from 5:00 to 11:59 instead of the requested 7:00. All in favor? Oh, please, just vote, if we can do that.
Thank you, guys, and look forward to working with you, continue to working with you.
Thank you so much for all your help. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. And then the other piece was the security?
Yeah, well, that was.
Part of that?
Wasn't that part of the, Mary, or was there a second?
Yes, that is correct. So they would only be required to have two security guards starting at 5:00 PM.
Right.
Prior to that would be one security guard.
Right, that was included in that, thank you.
Okay, so then we're finished, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good.
And, Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Creer, is it, we would like to bring them back at the end of February, beginning of March, to meet that other condition, where they, it does state that they needed to have a one-year review, that could take place today, if you wanted to consider this, or what we would recommend is just to bring them back, just to see how these new hours are operating.
I would recommend that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and again, for those of you in our audience, because Councilman Creer has to leave for the airport, we are going to hear right now Agenda Item Number 78, VAR 77267, public hearing. Applicant Charlie Conkaby, owner, Square Trade Holdings LLC. For possible action or request for variance to allow an existing six-foot-tall vinyl fence in the front yard, where a maximum of five feet with a two-foot solid base is allowed on 2.22 acres, at 858 West Lake Mead Boulevard, R2 Medium Low Density Residential Zone. And staff recommends denial, Planning Commission recommends approval. So this is a public hearing, and so let's go first, and I declare that public hearing open. Let's start with Mr. Summerfield, please.
Madam Mayor, this item is before you today as a result of a code enforcement case. As the owner constructed a fence without building permits and in violation of the zoning district's prescribed development standards. The request is preferential in nature, and as a result, staff has recommended denial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased if you introduce yourself, although we know who you are.
Mayor, councilmembers, Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I'll be very brief. We, my client didn't know that they needed a permit. We've been conditioned to pull the building permit after this is approved. As you can see by the photo that I have here on the display, there is an RTC bus stop, and the reason why we constructed it at six feet was to try and block the yard from the RTC bus stop. So with that, I would just ask that you follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. If I could ask a question on this, is there any opportunity to purchase that frontage so we can move the bus stop back off the roadway? Because I know we're trying, the RTC is trying to do that everywhere in town, because it's a safety issue.
Madam Mayor, as you mentioned, that is an RTC and Public Works thing. They've been working collaboratively on trying to locate places where easement can be purchased, or additional land can be purchased to move bus shelters back. I do not know if this location is one of those that has been identified as meeting the criteria for that, but I will check in with Mr. Jansen, our Public Works Director, and mention it to him, but at this time, I do not know of any attempts to move the shelter back any further than where it's currently located.
Well, and it would seem to me that maybe to move the bus stop into an area which doesn't impose upon that private property, but a place where a cutout can be done. So I know right now, this is only about the issue as it stands, so I'll obviously ask council if they have any input, and if anybody from the public would like to comment on Agenda Item 78, would you please come forward? I'll close public hearing, and, I mean, that to me would seem the best, because I looked through that stop, and I really feel sorry for anybody that might be using the other side of the fence, and it would be better to move the bus stop. But then again, too, are they going to widen, what is that street, what is this, Lake Mead?
Yes, ma'am, this is, I believe this is Lake Mead.
Lake Mead.
Yes.
So I mean, to me, that figures, and won't do anything to what you've already done, I mean, if that's approved. But look at some other location for the bus stop, but I don't know any of that, so it's just a recommendation to Councilman Creer as he moves forward. So.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. One, you know, I really, I'm not a big fan of the "I didn't know about it" mentality. I think that people who are building and developing and rehabbing know exactly what they're doing, and so I personally am not a fan of that. And to do it, and then to come and ask for forgiveness later, I think is, we've seen that so many times, or so many things, and if we continue to just allow that, then everything will be, "I didn't know about it." And on my two years in the Planning Commission, I can't believe how many times people have built patios extending out to the street, when they knew they had a setback, "Oh, I didn't know about it." And so I do take issue with that, I want that to be on the record, that your client knows better, or they should have known better. But with that said, I don't see it being too big of a, of an issue. If they had come through the proper channels in the first place, and most likely, this would have been approved. So I am going to recommend approval, and go along with Planning Commission's recommendation.
And, Councilman, what is the cross-street, the next major cross-street, either west or east of this property?
It is. I'm just looking at the map. Do you know? Hart, La Salsa, Revere, Lake Mead and Revere.
Okay. Well, I just really highly recommend that somebody in probably Planning talk with Public Works and just take a look at the area before there's more of this, to see if that is interfering.
Well, just FYI, I don't know if there's going to be a part of it, but we are doing a major rehabilitation project with Public Works for Lake, for Lake Mead, and I'm not sure if what's included in that with the RTC, or if there's anything with that bus stop, but there's going to be a major enhancement of Lake Mead.
Mayor? Mayor, was it? We're a little far afield of where we're.
Right. From the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, because it has, I believe it, I shouldn't say no, pardon me, because you're the lawyer.
Okay.
It just, to me, has, but, I mean, I've heard kindness out of Councilman Creer that he's probably going to approve it, but it does bring to mind, there's a bigger project here, and we don't want to have to deal this all the way down the road again and again, and it just alerts a flag to go up, so that's why I brought it up. It has nothing to do with his vote at this point, but I was wondering, as you're looking at this.
Good morning, I'm there. Good morning, city council, Mike Jansen, Public Works Director. Just a real quick little comment on this, as Councilman Creer indicated, we just started designing a new project on Lake Mead. It's a joint project with North Las Vegas, from LoSi Road all the way to Simmons, and one of the main components of that project is going to be to improve the bus amenities and elements, and looking at bus turnouts as well. So for sure, this will be a location we'll be looking closely at, it's right across the street from the Doolittle Complex, from the library, so this is a very high pedestrian activity area. I just wanted to let you know that for sure, this will be a location we'll be looking at very closely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Creer, was that a motion?
It was.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve. Agenda Item 78, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Mr. Jansen and Mr. Summerfield. Agenda Item 79, SUP 77216, public hearing, applicant owner Jeffrey, eyes and men for possible action or request for special use permit for proposed accessory structure Class 1 casida used at 3733 Bradley Road, RE, Residence Estates, Zone in Ward Five, also with Councilman Creer. Both Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and either the applicant or representative is before us, correct?
Yes, Gary Carlson, architect, 6440 Bristol Way, representing the client who's present in the room here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed conversion of the existing garage to an accessory structure Class 1 would be compatible with existing surrounding residential land uses, and will complement surrounding existing and future rural residential development at the project conforms to the RE Residence Estates zoning district. For that reason, staff has recommended approval, and any questions? Thank you.
And would you like to add anything to the approval?
Yes. This apartment conversion is in an existing garage, which has been there for some years. You can't see it from the street, and so there's been nothing that would adversely affect anything in the neighborhood. We've had approval from the Health District for amending the septic system, so it works fine. I have to note that the clients, at one point in time, would have liked to have connected to the city sewer in front of their property, and while at the utilities apartment, they showed me that the city had a camera in the 36-inch sewer system, which is not really used for residential. I was quite surprised at the efficiency of the utilities apartment. Anyway, we'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to add comment here or be heard on this? Agenda Item 79? I'll close public hearing, and Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no discussion, I'm just going to go with staff's, excuse me, Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 79, please vote and please post. So you are not on, that motion carries, you're not on city sewer then?
No, that's correct. They're on a septic system.
So what happens in the future?
All the residences along Bradley are on septic systems.
So what happens? What happened to, it was just a question, we're allowed to ask questions, right, council? Okay, question is.
Of course, of course, Mayor.
Where's Mr. Jansen? Did he leave? Sorry, we need to give you a microphone. When a complex or residence or anybody asks to hook onto city sewer, they're on a septic system, but it may, how do they do it if, and why was this turned down?
Good morning, Mayor, Mike Jansen, Public Works Director, Mayor and Council. We have a process in place for any citizen that is looking to hook up to a city sewer. They come down, they meet with our collection system staff, we look at the site, and we look to see where our nearest sewer system is, whether or not that sewer system has capacity or not, and after that first go-through, if there is no sewer system nearby to connect to, the next option would be following the Clark County Code that's related to the Health District, that dictates whether or not a septic system can be used or not. So I don't know the background on this one specifically, but I'd be more than happy to meet with the citizen, bring them to our collection system team, and we walk through all the steps, and see what we can do.
I'd like to make a comment. I apologize, Mayor, I didn't really bring this up as a concern, just as a point of, they have a 36-inch transmission line, sewer line there that connects other sewer systems, and it's not intended to connect to, for the residences, which I found out. So there's really no problem, no concern, I was just impressed that they showed me the sewer with a camera inside the sewer, I couldn't imagine.
Yeah, that is interesting.
Mayor, just a quick comment on that, one of your lines, "You must inspect what you expect," we use that all the time in Public Works, where we have to constantly make sure we know how our sewer system's condition is, so periodically, throughout certain periods of the year, we do video analysis of our sewer lines to make sure that they don't have any failures, that there's no overwear and tear, and it's just part of our overall program for making sure that our infrastructure underground, even though you can't always see it, there's a way for us to see it using the camera system, and so that's probably what the citizens are referring to.
And really, one of the reasons I was thinking of this, is having been an owner of a property, or my husband and I owned a property that was a septic tank property, we had to replace it twice, and then it came to the point that we were going to have to replace it again, and we decided to go ahead and pursue sewer hookup. And so, because of the capacity of the sewer line, forever, they're not going to be And so, because of the capacity of the sewer line, forever, they're not going to be able to do this, it sounds like?
I, we'd have to take a closer look at this one, Mayor, and just look at all the background info on, we sometimes have projects planned to do relief lines or to do additional capacity expansions on our collection system. So, I'd be more than happy to meet with the citizen and take a closer look.
Okay, if they want, only if you want. I mean, I was bringing it up because I remember going through the process, and it became really very, very expensive to keep replacing septic tanks, and it was reasonable to assume that we'd hook into a sewer line. But then, if in fact, the sewer line is at capacity, what happens in the future? I mean, so, just a question. You'll do what you need to do.
Right. Thanks very much.
So, you've been approved. Thank you very much, yes?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, this was no problem.
Okay. So, you're free to hit the airport. Where are you going?
National League of Cities.
National League of Cities, San Antonio, beautiful. Thank you very much. That motion was approved. Okay, well, now, we're going backwards, right, to 43. Administrative Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Approval of a Modification to Existing Collective Bargaining Agreements Between the City, Between Las Vegas City Employees Association LVCEA and the City of Las Vegas, $267,000 general fund. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Scott Adams, City Manager. This is an item that, under state law, I am obligated to present to you, make the initial presentation, but I'll say, I have not been in the details on that. And if you have any questions, you, I'm here with Morgan Davis, who's led our collective bargaining team on this. And I also believe Deandre Cruthers, the new president of the LVCEA, is also here and can address this document as well. But this is a revision to our collective bargaining agreement. It resulted from some grievances, but they were, I think, positively resolved. The primary one of which was how we're going to be handling, going forward, the compensation for employee work on union business. If you remember, a couple sessions ago, the state law has changed that obligated our collective bargaining units to compensate us for the time they spent on union activity, their employees did. The LVCEA used a birthday holiday, or part of a birthday holiday, across their employees to pay for that. That's been revisited and wrapped into this amendment. And so, it kind of flipped it back around. That was unwound the last session. And that is the primary issue that's addressed in this agreement, but there are a couple others. Should you have any questions about the details of it, Morgan would be glad to answer any of your questions.
And because President Cruthers is here, you'll respond, or you'll be ready as well?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mr. Adams said, Morgan Davis, Assistant City Attorney. The real item that's in front of you today that requires your consideration and action, and staff is recommending, it is an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement. In essence, we are reverting to language pre-existing SB 241 and 215. It restores the birthday holiday that CEA employees enjoyed prior to that amendment.
Okay. Any questions for Morgan? Anything? Okay, please, if you would, and announce yourself as well, even though I did say...
Madam Mayor, Deandre Cruthers, President of LVCEA.
Any comments, questions to this?
This has been a long heart, a long-fought battle. We filed a grievance. This is the outcome of the grievance. We're just hoping that you guys approve it, and we can hopefully celebrate our birthday for all 10 hours like we used to before SB 241 in 2015.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay. Mayor Protem, how about a motion?
Well, happy birthday. And with that, I motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda item 43. Please vote and please post.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Council. Also, this is retro back to July 1, which is the first day of fiscal 2019. I'm sorry, 2020?
Okay. And you'll confirm that, yes, if you wouldn't mind for the record?
Yes, that's in the backup, and that's the language of the agreement. It reverts back to the beginning of the fiscal year, which will be the last year of the existing collective bargaining agreement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay. Agenda item 44. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Complaint to Set a Hearing Date for Disciplinary Action Against Jade Garden Massage and Diana Yu Die, Individually and a Sole Proprietor Whose Place Business Is Located 6706 West Cheyenne Avenue, Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada, 89108, Holder of Massage Established License Number MO3-00161, An Independent Massage Therapist License Number M12-00701, For Violations of Las Vegas Municipal Code, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I'm Darcy Adelby-Herd, Business License Section Manager. This item before you is in regards to the massage establishment license, a Jade Garden Massage. They received their business license on January 18, 2006. This discussion is to approve the complaint and to set a hearing for disciplinary action against the business, and the owner of record is Diana Yu Die. On November 22, 2017, our business license internet investigator found advertisements for the business on websites that are known to solicit sexual activities. There have been two undercover operations by Metro that resulted in the officer being solicited for prostitution, one on November 28, 2017, and the most recent one on August 21 of this year. During the first undercover operation, the owner's sister, Jing Die, was arrested. The owner was not available, so Metro issued an emergency order to suspend the business license for one week. Business licensing did an inspection, and on November 29, 2017, City Licensing Division issued notices of violations and fines in the amount of $750. The violation of Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.02370A for violating state law NRS 201.654, engaging in prostitution or solicitation of prostitution. Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.52120B, allowing massage therapists to engage in or solicit sexual activity, and failure to maintain an employee register. Diana Die appealed the fines, and a civil hearing was heard on January 11, 2018. Following the hearing, a decision was made to uphold all three civil citations and the $750 fine. During the August 21, 2019 Metro operation, Diana Die, the owner, was arrested for soliciting the officer. Since receiving her business license, she has violated the terms of said license by providing or allowing others to provide sexual services and prostitution in exchange for money, all in violation of the business license, the laws of the State of Nevada, and Las Vegas Municipal Code. We request that City Council approve this complaint and set a hearing date in a time certain, no later than 60 days from the date of the approval of the complaint, and we would recommend this item to be heard on January 15, 2020, at 11:00 a.m.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Curtis, anything to add?
Nothing to add, Your Honor. John, Deputy City Attorney John Curtis also appearing.
Thank you. Comments, questions from Council? Okay. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to set a hearing for January 15, 2020.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve to set a hearing date for January 15. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to Agenda item 45. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Request for Public Services for Monthly Rate Increase of 74 Cents Per Residential Customer Due to Unforeseen Economic Circumstances. This is in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning. Veneta Alpiar, Director of Finance for the City of Las Vegas. The item you have before you is a discussion regarding the request of Republic Services to ask for a monthly recycling rate increase of 74 cents per residential customer due to economic unforeseen circumstances. The unforeseen economic circumstances is the policy changes implemented by China regarding recyclable materials, and Republic indicates that these policies have caused their costs to rise. Staff has met with Republic Services several times over the past four months, and we have reviewed materials that demonstrate changes in the market for recycled materials have raised their prices, and it has greatly impacted the revenue they are able to generate from those recyclables. We have with us here today Jennifer Lazovich with Kemfer Crowell, and she is going to be making comments on behalf of Republic Services.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza. Let me start again. Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive here today on behalf of Republic Services. Also with me is Vince Nudo, Jennifer Simic, and Jeremy Walters, if you have any questions that I cannot answer. As Veneta indicated, we are today before you to discuss a section of both our franchise agreement as well as Chapter 9.08 of your municipal code that references unforeseen circumstances. Republic has not sought a rate increase of any kind in over 20 years. We would not be before you today if we had our choice. We don't have a choice. We are here today, under that statute, seeking relief from policies that have been adopted by China. For years, China has been the largest importer of recyclable materials from the United States and has accepted over 40% of the world's recyclable materials. Prior to 2017, China accepted baled recyclable materials with a residual contamination rate of 5%. While that seems low, when they adopted policies known as Green Fence and Operation National Sword, they reduced that residual contamination rate from 5% to 0.5%. That equates to a 90% reduction in what China would accept. Other recycling importers around the world, such as Vietnam, Malaysia, Thailand, and India, have enacted similar policies. So, our other recycling markets followed the similar policies that China did in that reduced residual contamination rate. These policies have had a negative impact on all companies engaged in recycling business by driving up the operational costs and seeing a decline in the commodity pricing. We've waited almost two years before coming before you to see if either these policies would change, or would they be here to stay, or would they get worse. We think they're here to stay. We don't think they're going to get worse, and we know they're not going to go away. So, we spent the past several months working with your staff. I want to thank all of them, Veneta, Gary, Tom, as well as Gina Bishop, for meeting with us almost every other week for several months, so that we could go through this issue, because it's very technical, and there's a lot of financial analysis that goes into it, and we appreciate their time. Some of the information that we provided to them included examples of other cities that have adopted recycling adjustments, which are increases of between $2 to $3 a month. We, as Republic Services, have worked hard to make sure that the request that we are bringing before you today is actually under a dollar. Our request is to ask for a 74 cent per month adjustment on all residential recycling bills. Now, I do want to point this out. Even with this recycling adjustment, I think that this is helpful. For those of you that were here in 2017, when we did our contract extension, we showed a comparison of where Republic and Southern Nevada Falls, as it relates to other residential solid waste rates across similarly situated cities. As you can see on this chart, the City of Las Vegas is a monthly rate of $15.20. That's our base rate. And the other similarly situated cities, we referenced Chula Vista, by the way, as second in line, because they just adopted a recycling adjustment for all of their residential customers, and that is their monthly bill with that recycling adjustment in place. We also included El Paso, Texas, San Antonio. We did go with an urban city such as Seattle, and then even down to Glendale, Arizona. As you can see on this, we are still the lowest rates for solid waste in terms of monthly service rates at $15.20. And even if you were to approve this recycling adjustment that we're asking today, we are still substantially below a number of our sister cities that do the same services that we do, although I would like to say that we do it the best of all. In your backup, and I won't go through it, but in your backup, we provided a copy of a report that was prepared by coincidentally to Councilman Krier, the National League of Cities, that talked about what other municipalities across the country are doing, because it is an issue that is affecting every municipality, every county government, as well as any private business that's engaged in recycling efforts. One of the examples cited was in Durango, Colorado. They have passed a surcharge of $2.69 per month to continue their recycling efforts. Republic has always been a good corporate partner, and we have worked hard to make sure that our request is under a dollar and only 74 cents per month. We appreciate your consideration of this request. I do want to point out a couple of things that are in your backup, but I think it's important, because we really tailored this request to be specific to China's National Sword policies. We have specifically talked with staff. Your agenda item includes this, and if you are comfortable approving this request, these would be some of the conditions that we would ask that you place on this. The recycling adjustment will be embedded into the monthly residential solid waste and recycling rate for an initial term of five years. It would be subject to CPIU adjustments. During this term, Republic will not seek an additional increase of the recycling adjustment based upon China's National Sword policies. If the National Sword policies are still in effect at the end of five-year period, of the initial five-year period, the recycling adjustment shall continue for another term of five years. If Republic seeks an additional rate adjustment due to China's National Sword policies in the second five-year term, the City Council shall have the discretion to determine if an additional recycling adjustment is warranted based upon new unforeseen economic circumstances. One final point that I want to leave you with. Republic believes very strongly that recycling is the right thing to do. It's good for our environment, and it is the right thing to do. By way of statistic, and if any of you have had an opportunity to tour our recycling center, whether here at the city or if any of you are watching from home, it is open for tours, and it is quite impressive to see just what goes into these recyclable bales that we ship to other countries. But it is the right thing to do. And sometimes, you don't think about this, but just as a little fact, Republic keeps 90,000 tons of material from going to its landfill on an annual basis by turning those into recyclable materials that they can sell on the market. And I think that that's important to note, because that's good for our environment, it extends the life of our landfill, but it also shows you their commitment to ensuring that they want to continue doing recycling. It's just that this Operation National Sword policy is beyond our control, and we need that additional increase in order to keep up with the costs of recycling. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Again, Jennifer, Vince, and Jeremy are also in the audience, if there's a question that you have of them. Thank you.
I think, thank you very much for your comments. I do think one of the questions, and I'm sure we're all wondering, if in fact, China and other recyclable areas, countries, realize the economic impact it's having on them that they have curtailed and allowed an open field. What if they reopen? Is that, is something written into this contract that you will be back in front of us, and what happens in that eventuality, which I would think has to happen in China and Korea, wherever, Vietnam, wherever, these recyclables currently have been loaded?
Well, I think, we tried to account for that. What we saw, it wasn't just China that adopted these policies. As I mentioned earlier, it was Vietnam, Malaysia, Thailand, and India. They did the exact same thing in terms of the contamination rate. So, for that reason, we believe it's here to stay, and it's going to take a while for new markets to open up, whether that's in the United States or some other country. And we don't quite have a crystal ball as to when that'll happen, but that's why we did the initial five-year term. So, for five years, we won't come, we're going to take a chance. We're not going to come back to you for an additional increase over that 74 cents, but we're also saying, we think we need that 74 cents for that entire five-year term. Now, in the second five-year term, if those National Sword policies are still in effect, and we are still suffering the cost ratio that we're trying to balance out a little bit, that 74 cents can continue on. But if it gets worse, and that's always an option, we would be before you at that time, potentially, for an additional increase above the 74 cents that would be up to this council to determine if they would approve.
I'm going the other direction, though, that because of the economic impact to these countries having curtailed their processing, should they then go back into the business, is there anything that's into the contract that will change any of the... is there anything that's into the contract that will change any of the details that we would be agreeing to if this passes?
I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. So at the conclusion of the initial five-year term, yes. So if that happened, and it went the other way, and it got better, things got better for us, it would also get better ultimately because we wouldn't need to go forward with that second five-year term. We could reduce or eliminate that 74 cents from the bill.
And what is the timeline for review? How far in advance of the five-year timeline? Will it have to come back to make that determination? Because we don't want to put in a deadline and then miss hearing the particulars because we missed the deadline. What's in the contract for the jumpstart to review that issue? Two years, one year, six months ahead of time, whatever, before the rollover?
Well, my suggestion would be, and please, if Veneta correct me if you disagree, but I would say, given that this learning curve between us and staff in educating on this process took about four and a half months, I would say six months prior to the end of the initial five-year term, we would start meeting with staff again. Now, if you would like it in advance of that, we'd be fine, but that seems to be a comfortable timeline, given what we just went through.
Thank you very much. And I appreciated it as a customer all these years, and just that you have held your rate, which is why I was so enthusiastic about giving the extension for 20 years. Your company, my perspective, my family's perspective, top of the line. So opening this up for any comments, questions from council? Yes, please, Councilwoman Seaman.
So I have to admit that when this came across my desk, I asked my staff to find reasons to vote against it, but all the research that we, all the research that we did told us that voting for it was the right thing to do. The research did show us that the recycling industry faces a much different economic environment than it did five years ago, and China's restriction limiting contamination of recyclables from 0.2, 0.05 from 5 percent not only affected Republic Services but recyclers across the nation. And I don't believe that the solution is to go back to burying it all in the landfill, because I know that 90,000 tons of material is what we're keeping out of our landfills, greatly extending the life of those landfills. So I think that 74 cents a month is a small price to pay to continue with that effort. I can also tell you that I've had overwhelming volume of emails supporting the request that the residents of Las Vegas realize that doing the right thing for the environment sometimes comes with a price. So it is with those reasons and your pledge that you will not come back for five years that I'll be supporting it.
Thank you.
And therefore, because of your unusual comment in the opening address of this, I'm going to ask you to make the motion.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve.
Agenda item 45.
Agenda, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. This motion?
Could I just make sure that that's subject to the conditions that I read?
Yes, and our attorney, yes?
Yeah, that's fine, subject to all the conditions laid out by Ms. Lazovich.
Which is also laid out in your agenda.
And the six-month prior to the end of the contract, the review.
That's not actually laid out in the contract, but we will make sure we put that in our staff records so that we will start talking, just as we did this time with them. We do talk to you a lot. Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Everybody except Councilman Anthony, everybody has voted?
I have voted.
Okay, the motion carries, and Councilman?
No, it wasn't a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, you can say some at the end, because I will be opening up for public comment at the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to Agenda Item 46, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding, no, we did that. On to 47, which is Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Greg Toussaint, Ward Four Seat of Traffic and Parking Commission. Mr. Toussaint is eligible for reappointment, has the recommendation of Public Works Director, and wishes to continue to serve. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg Toussaint has done a great job on this commission, so I will make a motion to reappoint him.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to move forward and reappoint Mr. Toussaint, Agenda 47. Please vote and please post. I'm trying. There it comes. It says waiting. He did it. Yeah, but it says waiting on our computer monitors. Uh-huh. There it is. Just a little temperamental. Motion carries. Agenda Item 48, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Richard Plaster, Ward Two Seat of the Arts Commission. Mr. Mark Zachman occupies the Ward Two seat, which had a term expiration of October 14th, 2019. Mr. Plaster is eligible and wishes to serve. Councilwoman Seaman, do you have a motion for this item?
Thank you. I make a motion that...
Your mic is not on, I don't think. Thank you.
I make a motion that Richard Plaster would be appointed to the Ward Two Arts Commission seat.
Thank you very much. And that motion, vote and post, and it carries. Thank you very much. And now we're on to Agenda Item 49. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Members to the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, YNAP. Grant Review Board from the following list of nominees: Maria Farado, Laurel Bell, Jose Rodriguez, Samantha Monson, Serena Saracio, Rebecca Richard, and the mayor's designee, Rebecca Scousen, Ward Four, Harry Williams, Ward Five, Chance Montaventura, Ward Six, Ido Yuraldi, I do it wrong. Thank you very much, Ward Three, and the appointment of nominees Deborah Reyes and Andrew Sierra, Lexi Wilder, Nigel Murray, and Joshua Whipple, Mayor Designees, and Dorian Stonebarger, Ward One, Brianna Ramirez, Ward Two. The Department of Youth Development Social Innovation recommends the aforementioned, the aforementioned reappointments and appointments. And that would be my motion, and so please vote on that motion, and then post. She's up. It says waiting on our screens. Still says waiting. There it is, popped in. Motion's carry. Thank you very much. Move on to Agenda Item 50, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Kevin Mills to the Commission for the Las Vegas Centennial. The maximum 15 members have not been reached yet, and I wish to nominate Mr. Kevin Mills for the board. So that is my nomination. Would you please vote and post, please? That motion carries, so congratulations there as well. Agenda Item 51, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of County Services Director Kathy Thomas Gibson to serve as the alternate staff member representative on the AB 73 Working Group established during the 80th Legislative Session 2019 to address issues related homelessness. It has been determined that a staff alternate from each jurisdiction must be named to ensure quorum, and City Manager Scott Adams is suggesting Ms. Thomas Gibson to be appointed as his alternate, which she has accepted. So may I have a motion, please? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 51.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Thomas Gibson. You are now on board. Agenda Item 52, Recommended Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2019-40. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-40, An Ordinance to Generally Prohibit Within the Pedestrian Mall and Surrounding Areas the Use or Possession of Certain Types of Weapons and Implants, as well as toy and replica firearms, and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 52. Please vote and please post. There it is, popped. They can't see on their monitor that it says waiting. Motion carries. Agenda Item 53, New Bills. Items Number 53 through 57. Bills Number 2019-44 through 2019-48 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-44, An Ordinance Adding to LVMC Chapter 13.04, A New Section to Authorize the Department of Operations and Maintenance to Determine and Designate Hours of Cleaning for Public Sidewalks and to Provide Further Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-45, An Ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 6.50 to Provide an Exception to Certain Work Card Requirements for Convenience Stores that Sell Alcoholic Beverages, Clarify Work Card Requirements for Persons Providing Security in Certain Alcoholic Beverage Establishments, and Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-46, An Ordinance to amend the Minimum Special Use Permit Requirements Applicable to Marijuana Dispensaries as Found in LVMC Section 19.12.70 to Require a 1,000-foot Minimum Distance Separation Between Marijuana Dispensaries, Incorporate Distance Separation Requirements Between Marijuana Dispensaries and Non-Restrictive Gaming Establishments as Found in State Law, and Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-47, An Ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 13.36 to Expand the Prohibition of Smoking in City Parks So As to (1) Include the Use of Electronic Smoking Devices and (2) Generally Apply Throughout All Park Areas Instead of Specified Areas, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-48, An Ordinance to repeal LVMC Section 19.16.105 pertaining to the Repurposing of Certain Golf Courses and Open Spaces, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. In addition, Mayor, if I might, just a point of clarification for the record, Deputy City Attorney, on this final new bill, Item 57, Bill Number 2019-48, we inadvertently put the wrong section in the public agenda, both written and online. We just wanted to make that note. It is Section 19.16.105, and that will be corrected going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. New Bills, Number 2019-44 through 2019-48 are assigned to the December 2nd, 2019. Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony and Knutzen, and Councilwoman Mayor Protem Fiori. If any so designated or unable to attend, the Clerk's Office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my discretion and direction. Thank you. We are now moving into the next body of bills and issues. So we are moving into Number, right, Number 58. Goodness. This is Agenda Item 58 for Possible Action. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, we absolutely have nothing at the moment, so we will continue.
Well, just on we go. So Agenda Items 59 through 63 may be considered routine non-public public hearing, items with no condition changes. Any persons representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. I want to pause here because, Council, Mr. Scott?
Mayor.
Having voted on the consent agenda, there's an item on there I want to pull back. So how do I move that backwards?
You want to rehear something?
Yes.
Oh, okay, just do most of the reconsideration on that particular item?
Okay, just on that particular item.
On that particular item, if that's the only one you want to hear.
I want to make a motion to bring back Agenda Item 56 that was on the consent agenda, which is Bill Number 2019-47, Amends LVMC Chapter 1336 to Expand the Prohibition of Smoking in City Parks So As to (1) Include the Use of Electronic Smoking Devices and (2) Generally Apply Throughout All Parks Instead of Specified Areas. This is sponsored by Councilman Knutzen.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Apparently, from the city clerk and from Deputy City Attorney, you didn't take any action on that motion, but if you'd like to make some comments with regard to that item, you're welcome to do that.
Okay, so it was, I thought it was on consent. This is Agenda Item 56?
Yes.
So it's going to go to?
It was just read into the...
Oh, so just going on to recommend it?
Correct. That's correct.
So forget everything I said. Everybody at home, I hope you're drinking tea or coffee or a glass of water. Forget what I just said. All right, so back we go to now 59. Okay, EOT 77609, applicant owner DCB Inc., on a request for first extension of time on an approved variance, VAR 71086, to allow a 10-foot-tall block wall with chain-link fence and razor wire, where eight feet is the maximum height allowed, along the west perimeter; an 11-foot-tall block wall with chain-link fence with razor wire, where eight feet is the maximum height allowed along the north perimeter; 11-foot-tall chain-link fence with razor wire, where five feet's the maximum height allowed along the east perimeter; a zero-foot side yard setback, where 10 feet's required for an existing shade structure with razor wire; and razor wire interior screen walls on .23 acres of 47 30th Street M Industrial Zone, Ward Three, with Councilwoman Diaz. Number 60, EOT 77589, applicant Jack Pocchioni's DW LLC DBA Lucky Seven Owner Pine Development Inc., on a request for first extension of time on a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern used at 608 North Rainbow Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward One, Councilman Knutzen. Number 61, EOT 7719, applicant PJ Enterprise LLC, owner Aristotle Holding LTD, on a request for a third extension of time for a non-conforming use tavern at 1531 South Las Vegas Boulevard. C2, General Commercial Zone, Councilwoman Diaz, Ward Three. Number 62, RQR 77459, applicant owner Hideo Miyashita, on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 72960, for short-term residential rental use at 6216 Clarice Avenue, R1 Single Family Residential Zone, Ward One, Councilman Knutzen. And Number 63, ROC 77626, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner City of Las Vegas, on a request for review of Condition Number 14 of an approved special use permit, SUP 72606, for an off-premise sign use which states, "The proposed sign shall not be located within the public right-of-way or interfere with site visibility restriction zones. The proposed ground-mounted bases shall not be located within existing or proposed public sewer or drainage easements on the south side of Adams Avenue, west of Interstate 15, CV Civic Zone, Ward Five, with Councilman Creer." Staff recommends approval on all items which are public hearings, and I now declare them open. Anyone wishing to be heard on Items 59 through 63. I have a question on the razor wire, Council.
Yes.
I thought that was prohibited, or should ask Mr. Sarantes. I thought there was prohibited use of razor wire.
Hold it, Sir. I'll answer the record. Mayor, I'll defer to our planning parts. I think it's a planning restriction.
Madam Mayor, yes. So razor wire is a prohibited material unless approved by a variance or a special or a site development review. So originally, they had come in on this variance request to ask for these... So originally, they had come in on this variance request to ask for these wall heights with this material, and they had received that approval. They have yet to complete their permitting process on that, so that's why they're doing an extension of time. But, yeah, typically is a base material, it is prohibited, but there is discretion for the city council to approve it if they can make a security case for why they feel like they need to have that for, to protect whatever they're trying to do on their property.
So will you be reporting back to us on that, or not?
No, ma'am. So there's no anticipated report back on this. This is, at this point, they just need to get a building permit to substantiate that the walls are structurally sound, and then they'll be able to, they'll be able to continue to conduct business at this location.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. If you'd be good enough to state your name for the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Donald Williams, again, a family member, but also counsel for the owners of the property. We actually went through the razor wire argument with you guys, I think last year, and got approval on that. The real issue is needing more time to get approval on the shade structure, which has been there since before my family owned that property in 1990, I think is when we took that property over. My brother Doug is out of the country today. He runs the property, owns the property, if you will. He just needs a little more time, because they're going to do some testing with respect to the footings, even though it's been there that long, just to satisfy staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? A closed public hearing, and Mayor Protem may have a motion for the one motion, one vote, Items 59 through 63, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the one motion, one vote, Items 59 through 63.
Thank you very much. Would everyone please vote and please post? And they carry. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to Agenda Item 64. EOT 77578, public hearing, applicant owner Jerry Monica Schwartz Block Trust, et al., for possible action, a request for a fourth extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern use at 3540 West Sahara Avenue, Suite E1, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, and Ward 1, with Councilman Knutson. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is the applicant or representative present?
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the city council, Brian Hardy, 10,001 Park Run Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89145. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the staff finds that the applicant has demonstrated that the request for the extension of time is due to an economic hardship. The health, safety, and welfare of the public would not be jeopardized by the continuation of liquor establishment tavern use at this location. For these reasons, staff is therefore recommending approval of this extension of time with a one-year time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments you wish to make?
Other than we truly appreciate you guys holding this over for, to this agenda item today, as opposed to it was on a couple of weeks ago, to accommodate my schedule, because I was out of the country trying an arbitration at the time. So I really appreciate that, and we look forward to being able to get this thing built up and taken care of. We have a tenant who's ready to move in as soon as they can finish up their tenant improvement, so we just need this extension to give them in.
Excuse me. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on Agenda Item 64? I'll close public hearing, and Councilman Knutson, please.
Mayor, with staff's recommendation, I move for approval.
As a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Items 65 through 68. 65, GPA 77243, a request for a general plan amendment from O Office to DR Desert Rural Density Residential. Number 66, ZON 72244, a request for rezoning from CD Design Commercial to RE Residence Estates. Number 67, SUP 77245, a request for a special use permit for a 65-bed convalescent care facility nursing home use. Number 68, SDR 77246, on a request for a site development plan review for a post 37,000-square-foot convalescent care facility nursing home on 2.62 acres located on the northwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Shetland Road, C D Design Commercial and RE Residence Estate Zones, proposed RE Residence Estates. The applicant owner Shetland Land LLC on .97850 and 860 Shetland Road. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on all items. These are in Ward 1, with Councilman Knutson, are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
Your name, please.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is A.J. Plank, 10,024 Willowbrook Pond, here representing the applicant.
And with you is...
Hello. My name is Ari Steinberg. I am applicant.
You grew up on me. I've known you since you were teeny tiny. How nice to see you.
Lots of miracle growth.
Okay, Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning will match adjacent properties to the north of the subject site, and staff supports the request. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding development in the area, and the requested landscape exceptions for plant materials will not have a negative impact on the existing single-family residential dwellings or commercial developments that surround the site. Staff is therefore recommending approval of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments you'd like to add to Mr. Summerfield, please?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to take a minute and talk about the history of the property a little bit, because the context helps address some of the neighbor concerns, I think. The exhibit before you shows an earlier boundary proposed for the medical district. This boundary was not approved, but this is what was proposed at the time that the applicant bought this land. The applicant is, has a long history of bringing healthcare services to the valley, and the intention was to build a site, our site is right about here, to build a project that was consistent with the medical district. And what we had proposed at the time was a two-story medical office building that would have supported the medical district. We actually went in front of planning, or I should say not in front, but we did our pre-application meeting with planning, with that two-story medical office building, and our justification at the time was, look, we're in the medical district, and we think that this is a viable project. They told us, actually, you're not in the medical district, even though this boundary was what was available on the website at the time, on the city's website. The city had actually changed so that the medical district stopped at Rancho, which essentially pulled the rug out from under the project a little bit, because the justification of medical support services was no longer viable. So the applicant pulled that, rather than trying to push it forward, and worked hard to try to provide a, an alternate plan moving forward that would be consistent with the city vision as well as the neighbors. Honestly, at the time, who's to say if they would have even bought the land if they'd have known that it wasn't actually going to be in the medical district? The one thing that did change, though, is right about the time this whole thing was going on, the applicant had a very close family member pass due to complications with Alzheimer's and dementia. And this brought up the opportunity to really do something to help the community. They experienced firsthand the challenges to address those concerns with a loved one and experienced firsthand the shortage, the massive shortage that we have in our community for expert services in the memory care industry. So the thought at the time was, we would look at that option, thinking not only is it needed in the community, it's a valuable amenity, it's in a neighborhood that's aging, influential aging neighborhood, and it's still adjacent to the medical district, which is appropriate. So with that said, the application before you is essentially a nursing home that is a specialty boutique nursing home with a 100% focus on memory care, Alzheimer's, dementia, and that sort of thing. Now, like you mentioned, there are several applications before you. The bulk of the application, the general plan amendment and the rezone, is actually for the parcel up against Charleston. Currently, the two rear parcels are zoned RE, and a convalescent care facility is allowed in RE with special use permit. So what we intend to do is rezone and revise the general plan for this parcel up front to make it the same as the two in the back, rather than proposing it all be changed to commercial, which is more invasive to the neighbors. So the four applications that you read, the bulk of which have to do with changing that front parcel to RE, and then getting the use permit for the use. In terms of the design of the project, we were very sensitive all along to neighborhood concerns, knowing how many projects have been proposed and failed on this site because of a very active neighborhood community. We did everything that we could to try to, to sort of pre-address any concerns that may come up. You can see in the plan, the project is located as much up against Shetland as possible. All of the access, the vast majority of the access, the parking, all of the service entrance happens off of Charleston. None of that comes off of Shetland. There is one entrance on Shetland, because we needed to get something in the front door, but also because we needed a second exit out of the site for fire truck routing, so they would not take the fire truck in and back it out. So we really tried to get it so that we didn't need to have that driveway, but we do need it. So we made a concerted effort to get it as close to Charleston as absolutely possible, understanding that traffic along Shetland was going to be a major concern to the neighbors. We pushed the building as far south as we could away from the property line. We have the enhanced landscape along that back edge. Honestly, what works out better for the site would have been if we had have taken this driveway through behind the building, but that's not what would have worked best for the neighbors, so we didn't propose it. So that said, again, I think we're at roughly 65 max in the number of specialty patient beds. May end up being less than that. It's relatively small. Like I said, boutique sort of use. It is 24 hours, but it's a, it's a, it's a nursing home, so there's not a lot of traffic. It's more of a residential use with a business component. In terms of the design, we made every effort to be compatible with the CD overlay, to keep the building low, one-story, 21 feet. The architecture for the project, this is probably the best rendering, is low, unassuming, residential in nature, hopefully compatible with the neighborhood residences. So again, the story I'm trying to explain here is that we've really, we feel that we've gone out of our way to address, pre-address as many neighborhood concerns as possible. That being said, we did have a chance to meet with the neighbors in a neighborhood meeting, and they were nice enough to admit upfront that there was nothing that we could do to get their support on this project. There were 25 to 30 neighbors that showed up to the neighborhood meeting. It was overwhelming against the project, but I think one of the telling things is that there was no real consensus for why. Some of the neighbors didn't want any development at all. Many of the neighbors didn't want anything on those back two parcels that was not a residential estate. Many of the neighbors were open to a commercial use on the front part of the property, but were against the 24-hour nature of the facility. So there's no real consensus as to why they were against the project in terms of use. As we suspected would be the case, the traffic along Shetland was a major concern to them, and we explained that we tried to do what we could, but we need that driveway for fire truck access. One of the things that came up at the time in the neighborhood meeting was they're very attached to their estate streetscape, which is, you know, no curb and gutter, no sidewalk, no lighting, that kind of thing, and they proposed that we do something similar. I met with the planner involved after the meeting, who told me that such a thing would not be consistent with the land development plan and would require an amendment. And not an amendment, he didn't say this, but it was my opinion that it was unspoken, it was not an amendment that would really get staff recommendation behind it. But I think the most important takeaway from that neighborhood meeting was at the end, when I asked the neighbors, look, is there anything we could do, offer you to get your support of this project? And they said, well, you know, even if you could get the streetscape improvements that we want, or lack of improvements that we want, and get rid of the driveway on Shetland, we still would not support the project. So our takeaway, even though we did what we could, was that we knew it was going to be an uphill battle. In closing, I want to add that I did receive an email from one of the neighbors Monday of this week, essentially saying that they recognize the efforts that we've put through to try to make a project that's compatible, and though they're not crazy about the project, they do have some requests for moving forward. And I'm sure many of the neighbors are here, and you'll hear from them. The three requests, the first one is simply a reiteration of that request that we keep the estate streetscape, especially, actually, if I pull up the site plan here, what they would like to do, this parcel, let's see, this parcel across the street here is commercial, and it has all of the normal city streetscape with the sidewalk and curb and gutter. What they're asking us to do is only take our streetscape adjacent to that parcel, and once you hit here, and you now have those residential estates across the street, we would take that estate look that doesn't have the curb and gutter, and somehow transition into that. I'll say, in general, we're not opposed to that. However, we understand from planning that that's not consistent with the land development code. And the biggest thing for us is that this was sort of just dropped on us on Monday, and we really don't want this to go any further. So while we're open to suggestions for how to make that work within the land development code for the neighbors, we would like a final action today. So we don't want this to drag out for another set of hearings. So we're open to making that work, if there's some mechanism that that can be done, maybe through a condition of approval or something. The second item was a small boulder monument that had the rural estate sign on. That's totally fine. I think the applicant is willing to put that monument in for them. And the final option, the final request that they asked for was a sign here at this driveway that says, you know, right turn only, to try to keep traffic from going down Shetland. Again, we're completely fine with this, as long as city traffic will approve that as well. So again, I'm trying to reiterate that we want to do everything that we can to make this project successful with the neighbors and work with them, but this hitting us at the last minute has kind of put us in a bit of a bind, so we're looking for some help there.
Okay, and could you just, for Mr. Summerfield and his team, repeat the request, which you said did not pass muster, on coming up Shetland right there with the landscaping buffer for the residence across the street that you said was not within code? Just want to make sure that we have that in the record.
Right, so the development code says that we have to have a sidewalk curb and gutter and an associated amount of landscape next to the sidewalk as part of the streetscape standards. When you go back further into this development, even though, you know, mostly because it's so old, there isn't any of that. And I think the intent there is that that area between the property and kind of the right-of-way improvements would be used for equestrian activity.
Right.
So what they would like to see is that same lack of improvement that they currently have all the way up to here on this site, where there would be no curb and gutter, no sidewalk.
That's what I wanted you to reiterate, if you could, for Mr. Summerfield, who now I'm going to turn this over to him, then get public comment, and then, of course, give it over to Councilman Knutson.
Madam Mayor, so unfortunately, that would require a variance to make a change like that. That's not something we can just do as a condition here, because those streetscapes are required by your code. So my suggestion would be, one, if the council, councilman in his motion, if he's willing to entertain that as a site consideration, what he could do is he could direct, he could approve this, because there's going to be quite a bit of work they have to do... because there's going to be quite a bit of work they have to do before they would get to a point that they'd need to do those street improvements, if that were to be his decision or the council's decision, and then direct the applicant to submit a subsequent variance. And then, once that variance is approved, then they would have to submit revised site plans and do an administrative update to this site development review that's before you today. But my advice would be to act on this application today as presented. But if there is a shift in what your expectations as a council are, we can probably get that wrapped up for them before it would impact their timelines. But that would not be something that you can condition specifically today.
Because that's not agendized, I realize that. So any other comments on this other than gaining staff approval?
No, ma'am. The application is completely in order. The applicant has indicated they've worked extensively to make adjustments to their plan when they realized that the conditions for this property were different than what they'd maybe been when they were originally looking at procuring it. They've broken up the massing of the building, and it's a single-story building, so that it can be consistent and compatible with the adjacent development, both the residential and commercial. And so staff is fully in support of this project.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Anyone wishing to be heard on this, any of these, 65, 66, 67, 68, please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Chris Anderson. I live at 825 Shetland Road. That's the property directly across Shetland. I oppose the project. I and many in the community believe that that property should stand as it is. Here's a rendering of what we and the code, original code, says it should be. It should be two residential states next to a commercial property. This is a pretty, you know, these properties don't really exist anymore, you know, three-quarter acres, horse property, and they're very valuable as homesites. And when the properties were purchased, they were homesites. They knew this well ahead of time, that they were homesites. And now, a change wants to be made. And against those changes on those grounds, not so much that of what they propose to do, but where. And that is basically a nutshell in the opposition to it, that the community should stay as it is. With that being said, if the council decides that this isn't in the best interest of their proposal, then there's some consideration that some neighbors will want, meaning myself, the next-door neighbor, Dr., Mr. Baldwin, and across the street, Mr. Arleno. The person on the emails, me, that he was referencing. So the request as he laid out, actually, his whole statement was very factual, in what the neighbors had to say and their point of view. It's more the fact that this is built for homes, should be for homes. That's basically their bottom line. Just to go over a little bit more of what Mr. Plank said, is that we are the three neighbors here. I'm speaking for Dave and Felix, us three right here. And we propose that this stay sidewalk, just as this stay sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalk. And then right roughly here, we go back into a trailer path. It's very simple. I don't see what this gentleman said about why it should be sidewalk, because in my opinion, it's still technically equestrian estates. It's still technically residential, the use. So I think that those guidelines should be the same as the residence is not, as the business. So therefore, I think the path would be, it would fit. It would be a transition from the curb and business to the homes. So request that that, you know, be put into a, whatever the term is. The next thing that he mentioned was a plaque, you know, roughly halfway through their fence line. One of these exists at the Palomino entrance. I'm sure you're familiar with it. The city, I think, gave a partial grant for it a number of years ago.
Yes.
And if we could do that, that would be fantastic. The neighborhood would appreciate it. It would be an entry point visually, that you're going into a residential community. And that, along with the sign that we talked about, so the general thinking is that if a person's leaving, they say, you know, "Right turn only," and they look left, they see a stone, they're not going to go through the neighborhood. So in closing, I don't support the project personally, but I understand that as a whole community, there might be a different view. And that's your job, I guess, to decide for the community, so.
Very nicely stated. Could I ask you what year, can you put those properties back up, the three? Because having been in town a long time, what year, your property is the bottom right one?
I'm right here.
Okay. And what year did you purchase that?
Three years ago.
Three years ago. How about the property to your south?
To my south?
Yes.
That property was purchased two and a half years ago.
I was going to say two years ago.
By Dr. Shaw.
Yeah. And then the property to the south of that?
The property to the south is Mr. Baldwin. He's been there 22 years.
Okay, but he's further north. How about this bottom?
Well, I mean, he is, but he looks right at it.
Okay.
Felix, I'm not sure. I think it's 16 years.
Yeah. Okay. Just a point of reference. And down here on the corner, of course, is commercial right now, correct? So you're at the top, and other gentlemen's here in the middle, don't, a couple of years. And what year did the property transition? What year did you all buy?
We purchased the three different parcels across the last 10 years, starting with the front parcel, the commercial parcel, and the two behind it following that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we appreciate your coming down and your rational approach. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any questions before I turn it over to Councilman Knutson? Okay, please, Councilman Knutson.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Anderson, I have your letter and those drawings, and so I would like to follow up with you after this meeting, if appropriate. Mr. Steinberg, I have several questions for you, if we can jump into it. First, I want to reiterate that the comment around there's no consensus. I live in the neighborhood directly across. I drive past this property several times a day. And it's very true, there's no consensus about what everybody wants that community to look like. Equestrian Straits, McNills, the Scotch 80s, everybody has very different opinions around how the community's going to respond to the significant growth that we're seeing because of the medical district. So I just want to reiterate, there is no consensus. It's very difficult, being a representative, to figure out how best to meet the needs of every single person. And so the very rational discussion around how we can compromise, I very much appreciate that, and the time and energy that you put in, Mr. Anderson, I really appreciate that. Can we, for a second, how long has this land been vacant? Because I moved into the neighborhood 11 years ago, and it's always been vacant as long as I've been there.
At one point, there was a small residential dwelling on the back far north parcel. That was a number of years ago. Since then, it's been vacant, and the front parcel, the commercial parcel, has been vacant to my knowledge for perpetuity.
Do you mind talking about some of the other ideas you've had for that property and how you finally got to a memory care center?
We would have loved, at one point, to put a higher-density medical office building there, two stories. There's a overlay that prevents us from going vertical above 21, 22 feet within this corridor, so that was out of the question. We've been approached by small grocers, natural grocers, like some grocers to that, that would generate much more traffic in this neighborhood, additionally be a larger nuisance with delivery of food. We've been approached by fast-food users on the hard corner. We've been approached by gas stations on the hard corner. We really believe that this is the best use of the property because it does cause the least disruption for the residential neighborhood behind it.
As a property owner, and this is your land, how did you end up coming to a memory care center? What was, why is it that?
There's only 700 licensed memory care beds within Las Vegas today. There currently is a little over 10,000 people that need memory care within the Las Vegas Valley. There's a huge deficit of licensed beds that exist, and this is a use that is supportive with my family's business, healthcare. We've been in healthcare in Nevada for over 50 years, and we'd like to continue being in healthcare in Nevada for the next 50 years. And this is a new business model that we look to roll out, and this would be our first facility within Nevada.
And Mr. Steinberg, one of the things, coming into this position that I learned, is there's a significant need for higher-end employment in the ward. Can you talk a little bit about the employee base, average wage? How many employees do you think will be in there?
At this facility, we'll be employing 54 individuals. The average wage is $20 an hour. That ranges from $13 an hour with our housekeeping and kitchen staff, up to upwards of $150K a year for executive directors and medical staff.
And Mr. Steinberg, do you mind talking a little bit about the patients? A general idea of what the patient's condition will be?
We'll have two different levels of memory care and dementia treatment here, level one and level two. Level one, I should go on before I go into the different levels. This is a lockdown facility. Our residents are locked within the facility for their safety. Two different levels are level one and level two. Level one is a resident that needs lower intensity of care. They're still able to feed themselves, take care of themselves, bathe themselves, but they do need to be washed 24 hours a day and need to be locked within the facility. Then level two, which is a smaller portion of our facility, are for individuals that are at the end-of-life care, prior to hospice, that have trouble feeding themselves, have trouble bathing themselves, showering on their own.
In the presentation that Mr. Anderson mentioned in the email, I think, exchanged between the two parties, there was a request for signage in the front for equestrian straits, and there's also a request for a no right turn out of the Shetland Estate, or the Shetland Drive driveway. Is that, are those comfortable for you?
Those are changes we'd accommodate.
Okay. The third request, although I'm not sure I understand the planning expectations yet on making the front end more concrete, the back end more equestrian, if we were to work on that after this process, are you comfortable working on that with us?
As long as it didn't delay the proceedings here today.
Okay. Mr. Summerfield, can you help me? For each one of these, I would like to make a recommendation for approval with the conditions that I just talked about, and then work with your team afterwards on working with the residents on that back-end equestrian states, if that's comfortable for you as well.
So, Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman, so I've just looked over to my partner from Public Works. It appears that there is no concern about the right only onto Shetland from the property, so that would be something we can do as a part of your motion. That would be a part of your motion on the site development review, for there to be a condition that the exit onto Shetland be marked as right only, so that people are turning right onto Shetland towards Charleston. That would also be the place, if you wished for the applicant to place a monument sign, we will, of course, need to review that, just to make sure that it's not encroaching on any of our sign code issues. But yes, you could also put that on the site development review as well. So that would be the place for those two conditions. And then verbally, if you wanted the applicant to continue to work through the request to look at making a potential variance request for the portion of their street improvements that they're required to do, that would be something that you could just verbally direct them to continue to work with your office and staff to move forward with that request.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. Mayor, through you with the conversation today on...
We'll take them, Councilman, if we could, we take them one at a time, then. We'll start with 65.
Yes. On item number 65, I would motion for approval.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 65. Please vote and please post. And on 66?
Madam Mayor, a motion for approval on item number 66.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve agenda item 66. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. Agenda item 67?
Madam Mayor, item 67, motion for approval.
Motion to approve on agenda item 67. Please vote and please post. And then on 68, I gather, it's subject to all those conditions you listed.
Yeah, and I want to try and repeat them so I can get it in my head. So item number 60, I had a motion for approval with the conditions of the exit on Shetland being a right turn only, and given the condition with the planning department's approval of this equestrian sign on the corner of Shetland and Charleston. And then verbally, with Mr. Steinberg's request, work with him and staff on making the front end more concrete, the back end more equestrian. With that, I'd motion for approval.
And to which you agree to all those conditions that Councilman Knutson just stated?
Yes, we agree to all those conditions.
And Madam Mayor, if we may, so I believe Mr. Anderson wants to do a modification to condition 12, and then I would like to read a condition for the sign that just encapsulates some revised plans and what have you, but I'll let Mr. Anderson go first, if that's okay.
Hi, Bart Anderson, Public Works. Condition 12 currently is the condition that requires them to construct all incomplete half-street improvements on Shetland. I would like to append to that condition, the direction that left turns shall be, or the exit onto Shetland Road shall be signed, "Right turn only, no left turn." And that, another sentence stating that the requirements of this condition may be modified if a variance for street improvements is approved subsequently.
Thank you for saying it more clearly. Yes, I agree.
I will write that down, yes.
Thank you.
And then, Madam Mayor, my planner-y's version of the councilman's request on the sign will be that the applicant, prior to issuance of building permits, applicant shall submit revised site plan and landscape plan to reflect placement of monument sign commemorating equestrian estates, I believe is what it's called, if that works.
Would you state it orally, please?
That is correct. The monument sign that says equestrian estates will be written into our site plan.
Okay, thank you. And could you, Mr. Summerfield, because obviously with their request, Councilman Knutson asking for a yea or nay today, so they don't spend more time, what is the estimated length of process to go with the conditions from your viewpoint?
So, Madam Mayor, so the revised site plan, landscape plan for the monument sign, and the note about the no left turn, that should be something that their architect should be able to put forth relatively quickly. The variance process, though, is going to be a minimum of 90 days to 100 days. So I don't know how close they are to being ready to submit a permit packet on this entitlement process. So depending on how close they are in that, I don't believe, because of the permit review process and the civil review process, I believe that they have time to accommodate a variance. It'll just be up to the applicant on, if they're ready to go now, then they'll need to start that process now. If they believe they still have some time before they're going to be submitting for their permit reviews and what have you, then they may have a little bit more time to submit for that variance application for those street improvements.
Is there any speed assessment that we offer at the city if they could, would, or want to move forward faster?
Unfortunately, Madam Mayor, the public process does not have an expedited process. However, that type of variance would be something that I believe can be final action at Planning Commission. So depending on the councilman's review, once that gets to his desk, once we have an actual application, that may be able to be final action at Planning Commission, which could shorten the time period by about 45 days.
And is that something that the council, this year, council today, may approve that if, in fact, it is what Councilman Knutson wants, and they agree with that?
So you can approve it today because unfortunately that item...
You can or cannot?
You cannot, because that item is not before you. It does require a public hearing, so that item on itself will have to be heard on its merits for that deviation from your street standards. And so you can't actually take action on that today, or technically set an opinion concerning that today, because that's not before you.
Okay. So it looks like I already voted your motion. Did you do the last one, 68?
Yes.
You did, subject to those conditions?
Correct.
Okay. So we're just waiting on Councilman Diaz, hers to clear. There it is. And that motion carries. Good luck. So you heard the timeline, and that's the next step.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, Mr. Anderson, if it's okay with you, I'll reach out to you this afternoon and see if we can set up some time to think through what you would like that area to look like, and then I'll meet with Steinberg, Mr. Steinberg, and then start working with the planning department. the planning department, if you're comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Okay, we're agenda, it is quarter of 12, just for those of you who have rumbling stomachs, so we can keep going. Agenda Item 72 through 75. 72, GPA 772, pardon? Oh, how did I skip over 69? Little tiny one in there, there it is. Okay. 69 through 71, okay, thank you. GPA 77257, our request for a general plan amendment from L-O density residential to M, medium density residential, number 70ZON77258, a request for rezoning from R1, single-family residential to R3, medium-density residential, number 71, SDR 77259, a request for site development plan review for a proposed three-story, 34-unit multifamily residential development. The applicant is International Asset Managers, Inc. The owner is Corey LLC on 2 acres, 2.00 acres, southwest corner of Upland Boulevard, Corey Place, R1, single-family residential zone, proposed R3, medium-density residential. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on all items. These are in Ward 1 with Councilman Knutson. Are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good morning, Liz Delk, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is with me today. I am filling in for Mr. Gronauer. He sends his apologies. He's stuck at BCC this morning.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would match the adjacent properties to the west, and staff supports these requests. Additionally, the proposed multifamily residential expansion development adheres to the majority of Title 19 requirements, and staff is recommending approval of that site development review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to make some comments, or shall I go ahead with the public comment first?
Just quickly, I'll just go over the project, if I may, thank you. So, as you know, the project is 2 acres on the corner of Corey and Upland. We are requesting a zone change from R1 to R3. Directly to the west of us is the existing Tiffany apartment complex. The project here before you today would be an expansion of that project. We're requesting to do an additional 2 buildings and 34 units. I believe there is a typo on the agenda. It states that it's a three-story building, and we are only 2 stories. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. We also have added the 2 rows of trees along Upland per the request of Planning Commission, and we are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so please, if anyone from the public has any comments on Agenda Item 69, 70, or 71, I will close public hearing then. Any questions from council? Turning it over to you, Mr. Knutson, Councilman Knutson.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for the very brief presentation. In my office, this has been somewhat of a contentious item for several months prior to me coming into the ward, but I am very comforted to know now that we don't see a whole lot of opposition, and the applicant has done a really good job of reaching out to the neighbors and making sure that what is developed is consistent with the expectations of the neighborhood. So, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a very good addition to the ward, and with that, I would motion for approval on item number 69.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 69. Please vote and please post. Please post.
He's not popping up, I'm sorry. Is that true?
And please post. And that motion carries. Let's go to 70, please.
Madam Mayor, on item 70, a motion for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 70. Please vote and please post. And finally, on 71, please, councilman.
And, Madam Mayor, on item number 71, a motion for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 71. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How long a break do we need on Agenda Item 44? Are we okay, or what?
I believe council makes statements.
Mayor, with regard to item number 44, the Clerk's office just needed a clarification that the motion was to approve the complaint, set the date for the hearing, and that'd be a time certain for 11 o'clock. So that's just a clarification for the record.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Okay, so we're okay to go on? Thank you very much. We're moving along with Agenda Item 72 through 75. GPA 77278, a request for a general plan amendment from M-L, medium-low density residential to M, medium-density residential, number 73ZON77279, a request for rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R3, medium-density residential, number 74, VAR 77424, a request for variance to allow 38 parking spaces where 40 are required for proposed multifamily residential development. And Agenda Item 75, SDR 77280, a request for a site development plan review for proposed 28-unit multifamily development with a waiver of landscape buffer requirements. The applicant is Charlie Conkoby, and the owner is Square Trades Holding LLC on 1.20 acres, southeast corner of Sand Hill Road and Spino Avenue, RE Residence Estates Zone, proposed R3, medium-density residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. Staff recommends approval on 72, 73, and denial on 74 and 75. These are in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Mayor Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I promised to be brief today, because I know we're all hungry, so I won't talk too long. So this is an infield piece. I have this exhibit, just to show you guys, this is the property that we're talking about. This is the property right next door. I wanted to point out that when I show you the site plan, we're going to have more landscaping along here, along Sand Hill, on our property than is shown here. Just to address a couple issues, we're only 2 parking spaces short, and then related to the landscaping, we're literally just a few, I mean, a couple bushes short on the landscaping, and that was because of the one corner of the property, which I can show you on the site plan. So this corner right here is where we're short a little, just a little bit on landscaping. I think we're still in 90 percentile on landscaping. Other than that, we did hold a neighborhood meeting, as required, with the GPA. One person did attend the neighborhood meeting. Her only concern was that, once the project was completed, that we put a sign on the property with the property management's information, since she lives in the area, and if there's a problem, she could call the property managers to get over there and handle it right away. And other than that, we just ask that you follow staff's recommendations for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Let's go over to Mr. Summerfield on the nos and the yeses.
Madam Mayor, so the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would allow residential densities that are comparable with other multifamily residential development that is surrounding and adjacent to the subject site. Staff, therefore, recommends that you approve the general plan and rezoning. However, staff finds no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the applicant's parking variance request, and as a result of that parking variance request, must recommend denial of the remaining application. As the applicant representative did mention, they are complying with the number of trees, their deviations for landscape, or because they are short a little bit on the width in that area on the western property line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to Agenda Items 72 through 75? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll close public hearing, and Councilwoman Diaz, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also want to clarify, I think, for the community, these, they're apartments, correct?
Yes.
These apartments are going to go on the market at market rate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I received some opposition or hesitancy about it, but I think that their gleaning of what you're trying to build wasn't what their thinking is going to pan out, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear for them. I appreciate Mr. Conkoby coming in the early stages of planning for this development. I think that giving my constituents options, hopefully these are nice, high-end apartment living opportunities for residents that like the area but want something newer, and when something's new, it feels good to come in and rent something that might be more energy-efficient and more, especially when it comes to power and the AC in the summer times, something that's newer, up to, you know, speed, it's going to cost less down the road. So I see it as a value added. There's about 28 units, is that what it is? And I think that just missing the parking by 2 spaces, it shouldn't be overly onerous on the residents, and currently, what that vacant land is breeding is a lot of couch dumping and furniture dumping, and I just completely see this as an upgrade, and I do want to reemphasize anything we can do to make this beautiful surrounding in terms of landscaping. I just please beg that we make our neighborhood look really spiffy and nice. And other than that, I'm ready to move for approval, Madam Mayor.
Please.
So, item number 72, I move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 72. Please vote and please post.
Madam Mayor, you want me to just make a quick comment?
Please.
And, Councilwoman Diaz, I'm going to support you in your motion, but as a body, we should continue to look at seeking out our development partners who are bringing in, especially in areas, especially in Ward 5 and Ward 3, of finding some set-asides for affordable housing, at least, you know, even if you don't do 30% AMI, 60% AMI. And then, we need to discuss, as a body, about the importance of impact fees for our developers that will, as we grant zoning rights and entitlement rights, that the developers will work to bring other impoverished areas up in addition to these entitlements that we're giving them. So even if we had, if it was 28 units and we set aside a 5% of the units at 60% AMI, we would still be able to provide our residents some type of affordable housing aspect of it, because we know that's a big issue. And as we continue to keep building, rents are going to continue to rise, and I've seen it in my travels around the country where they have, and I mean, most developers are willing, because they realize it's an issue as well, and also allows people in the community to stay within the community, instead of having them pushing them out.
Thank you. Okay, so please post. You could do it orally.
Yes.
Okay, and the motion carries. Let's move on to 73, please.
I move to approve Item 73.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 73. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries as well. 74, please.
I move to approve Item Number 74. And, Mr. Summerfield, there's no conditions, correct?
No, ma'am, there's no conditions.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. And that motion carries. And finally, 75.
And I move to approve Item Number 75.
And there is also a motion to approve Number 75. Please vote and please post. Well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Move forward. Thank you. Now we'll move on to 76 and 77. VAR 77419, a request for variance to allow termination of a public alleyway in a den-end stub where cul-de-sacs required. Number 77, VAC 77293, a request for a petition to vacate a portion of a 20-foot-wide public right-of-way alleyway. The applicant is Mike Ganti, and the owner is City of Las Vegas, a portion of a 20-foot-wide public right-of-way alleyway segment bound by Fremont Street, Carson Avenue, 13th and 14th Streets. The Planning Commission and staff recommend denial on both items. These are in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Jeff Catalowick, architect, at 353 East Bonneville, Suite 171, representing owner, Mike Ganti.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Mike Ganti, 1266 Pin Alley Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89119.
Thank you for all that you do, and especially our veterans. Okay, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed vacation would create a public right-of-way terminus that would end with no cul-de-sac or alternative access through this alleyway. Staff finds that there's no unique hardship to support a variance request, and therefore is recommending denial of both applications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to make comment on these items? And would you care to make some comments about the need here?
Yes. So I've been working with Mike for the past few months to convert this old motel apartment into a restaurant. Those plans have since been approved by the building department. The issue here is the, and this has actually just been brought to my attention, that there was a vacation application, VAC 4296, from October 1696, that this alleyway had become part of the private property. Because these 2 parcels that actually connect, I don't know if you can see here, this is the front on Fremont, where we've converted to a restaurant, these being small, single units, and the property to the rear. We're looking at vacating this alleyway, which is actually pretty narrow anyway. It doesn't look like there were trucks that were able to make this turn. There used to be a fence terminating here anyway, so...
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on these 2 items? I'm not sure if I closed public comment. Going to do so right now, and we're going to turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it has been brought to my attention by my staff that there was an attempt to vacate this alley, or has been vacated since 1996, just not formally vacated, and I just wanted you to speak to where were we in '96, why are we back here in 2019, and why you're seeking us to vacate this alley.
Well, if you take, what we are talking about is a portion of the alleyway that runs, dissects, literally dissects my property, such that I own both sides, and we have 20-foot section that goes right through it. And we worked with Councilman Reese's office back in 1996, and that portion of the alleyway was vacated. We had a fence over here, and the fence clearly stated that the vacation order number, et cetera. And this portion was closed since 1996, all the way to 2019. Sometime in the month of January, when we went in to, for, to the planning, for the purpose of reopening the asset, we were told that apparently there were some irregularities with the way the vacation was recorded. So they suggested that we come back in front of you to clear that out. But what I would like to say is, we had a total control over the security and everything when it was closed, but soon as we opened up the fence, we have people coming from all directions, and it's just absolutely impossible to operate that property right now. So there is a significant amount of hardship associated with the fact that now, our side door is open, the back door is open, the front, and when there, there is traffic sometimes at late hours, and they come in and they turn real fast, hit the cars that are parked on my property, and at one time, they even ran into our building. Of course, the damage was small, and so the alleyway is simply useless for vehicular traffic. It's just too small. Republic Services backs out anyway.
Okay, so there's really no connectivity throughout that alleyway, and I have heard that it's too narrow to create a cul-de-sac by which then Republic Services would be able to turn around. So if it's coming in and backing out anyways right now? And so you have been maintaining this alley since '96, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, now it would just be formalizing what you've been doing. So I don't know if any of my colleagues have any...
So I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions?
Nope, they look good.
All right. Well, with that, I'll move to approve item number 76.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 76. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. And Agenda Item 77.
We'll move to approve Agenda Item 77 as well.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 77. Please vote and please post.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. Mayor and the rest of council, thank you.
Thank you. Of course, we have already done 78 and 79, so what we're going to do, we'll take 80, 81, and 82, and then we will take a recess before our reports and presentation. So, number 80 is SUP 77277, public hearing, applicant Ramon Guerrero, owner NFC LLC. Possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed 7,331 square-foot restaurant with alcohol use at 2,400 West Sahara Avenue. See One Limited Commercial Zone with Councilman Knutson. Both Planning and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? No. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the, let me make sure I'm on the right one, 80. So the proposed restaurant with alcohol use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing uses within the shopping center and the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone have comment on either of these items? One item, excuse me, 80. Councilman Knutson, I'm going to close public hearing. Yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did try to get ahold of the applicant to make sure he was here today and weren't able to. That being said, someone from my staff was at the grand opening. We feel comfortable that it's a good use. And with the Planning Commission and staff recommending approval, I would also move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 80. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 81. SDR 76888, public hearing, applicant owner Squares Trades Holdings LLC. Possible action or request for site development plan review for proposed eight-unit multifamily residential development with waivers to the downtown Las Vegas. Appendix F parking and landscaping requirements on .16 acres at 638 North 9th Street, R3, medium-density residential zone, Ward Three, Councilwoman Diaz. Oh, you've been sleeping here. You're back.
I'm back.
Go.
Mayor, Councilmember Nathan Taylor, 8414, West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I'll be brief, because I know we're all hungry still. Couple of things I'd like to point out. I want to first thank Councilwoman Diaz and her staff for working with us on this. It was kind of a unique infield project. I also wanted to recognize Planning Commissioner DeSalvio and Planning Commissioner Schlotman. When we had first submitted this project to the city, we had a really large footprint, and it prohibited us from putting in the required landscaping. So with the suggestion of those two planning commissioners, we went back to the drawing board, and we reduced the size of the footprint so we could get close to about 75% of what landscaping is required in the area, and that's pretty much where we got to. We actually reduced the footprint by about 5,600 square feet, so we took the units that were a little over 1,000 square feet, and we knocked them down to about 700 square feet, approximately around there. We're excited about this project. It's on a lot that, as the councilwoman probably knows, there was a building there at one time, I believe. It may have, she may know better than I do, but I think it had burned down. There was some vandalism and some stuff going on on the property that shouldn't be. So with that, and thanking all those folks, I just request that you follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, due to the proposed parking and landscape buffer waiver, staff finds that the proposed development is overbuilt and not appropriate to the subject site as submitted. Staff would acknowledge, as the applicant's representative just indicated, based on the recommendations of Planning Commission, they have substantially reduced the building footprint. They have improved the landscaping. It's still deficient, but they have improved the landscaping. They have additionally improved the facade treatments on this building as a part of those revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make comment on Agenda Item 81? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to go ahead and ask the council to follow Planning Commission's recommendation to approve item number 81.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 81. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
To you too. And on to Agenda Item 82. SDR 77286, public hearing, applicant Bell Investment Group, owner Cornerstone Company. For possible action and appeal of the denial by the Planning Commission, request for site development plan review for proposed 34-story mixed-use development consisting of 29,974 square feet of commercial office space and 513 multifamily residential units with waivers of downtown Las Vegas overlay architectural standards on .46 acres at 1211 South 3rd Street. See One Limited Commercial Zone, Ward Three, Councilwoman Diaz. Planning Commission and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
And you are?
Good evening, or, whoa, I think I've been here too long today.
Whoa, you're under duh.
Good morning, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980, Festival Plaza Drive, here today representing the applicant. Would you like me to go first?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So, here today representing the applicant, we are here on an appeal of an item that was denied at Planning Commission. That was not necessarily for the reasons it may come across if you just read the Agenda item. Due to some timing issues, we were required to have the Planning Commission consider the application as it was submitted. However, we knew we were going to be making changes, and we have subsequently made those changes in between the Planning Commission hearing and the City Council hearing today. So the project that I'm going to present to you today with these changes was, although verbally represented that we would do it at the Planning Commission, they didn't have that technically in front of them. Since the time of the Planning Commission, we have done some changes, but the main thing that we've done is add more parking to this project and lost some units. Looking on this overhead, just to orient you where the property is, it is this vacant piece of property right where Third and Fourth kind of come to a point, and this is Colorado Avenue. There's a small city of Las Vegas Park, and then we sit right to the north of that. Farther north of there would be Charleston Boulevard. The project that we are proposing is for a concept called micro-units. The developer is a real developer and a company out of, based out of Germany. They've done projects all over the world, in Barcelona, in Berlin, and as I'm talking about this, in Miami. This gives you an idea, the client is Bell Invest, or the developer is Bell Invest, of their projects that they've done around the world, and with this concept of micro-units. They think that this is the perfect location. It's kind of the midpoint in between downtown Las Vegas and the strip area for this type of project. Your staff, and we respect them greatly, has expressed some concerns over the ratio of parking. There were some other concerns in terms of the design of the building, but I would say that that was the main concern. So after the Planning Commission meeting and what's before you today is a project where we've made the following changes. We have reduced the overall height of the building from 400 feet to 384 feet. We've removed 26,000 square feet of office space. We've reduced the number of units from 513 units to 433 units, and we've increased the number of parking spaces to 420. So one of the main concerns was making sure that we had adequate parking for our units and our residents. We have 433 residential units, and we have 420 parking spaces. So we're about at 97% parking for the residential. Now, we do have a small component left of 3,900 square feet of commercial. So although we removed the office, we kept a small portion of the ground-level commercial, 3,900 square feet. We believe, and the developer of this project is very passionate about the parking ratios, and in their opinion, they actually think for the market that they're trying to attract, we're actually providing more parking than is necessary, but we know it's a sensitive subject for the city, and sensitive to the other businesses that are around there, which include coffee shops, and Esther's Kitchen is near there, and the new wine bar, and other restaurants that have come in. So we understand that there's, you know, a fine balance that we have to strike. We think we've struck it with the revised plans that we have provided to you. You know, when you look at this area, there's a lot of vacant property, and then you have ours, and, you know, a development like this with a real developer who's built these projects, both in Europe and now coming over to the United States, we think is great for not only the area, but also for those businesses that I just referenced, and even new businesses that are coming in. Also, for what it's worth, and I think this might give you some further comfort on the parking, I recently represented a project that is located closer to Charleston in this area. It was also a mid-rise mixed-use project, and in that particular case, staff did recommend approval. We were providing sufficient parking. So it isn't like every project that's coming in in this immediate area is underparked. Again, this one has just a unique concept with it being those micro-units. They believe the parking with the revised plan meets what their residents will need, and then some. And we also think that this project is a great boom for an area that is now just starting to see more and more cool things happen in it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, so since this is an appeal, the original project as mentioned was, while it was meeting some of the intent of the downtown master plan, and specifically the 18B Las Vegas Arts District, it was, the project as originally proposed was significantly overbuilt, given what they've done. Since the Planning Commission decision and the submission of this appeal, as the representative did indicate, they have submitted revised plans, planning has looked at those. In addition to what the representative talked about, they have improved some of those architectural design standards that were deficient in the original submittal by enhancing the entrances with some trellises and some canopies, and doing some additional architectural work with some cornices and what have you on the building. We do find that the parking ratio is much more in line with what staff has been supporting in this area, in other developments, on these revised plans. We do have an adjustment, so if council is amenable to this revised application, we do have some condition changes. Specifically, we would delete Condition 3, and then we would make an amendment to Condition 2 to reflect the most up-to-date plans that we have received and reviewed from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Agenda Item 82? I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll turn this over to you, Councilwoman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Ms. Lazovich, just so the council is informed, because they didn't have necessarily the opportunity to speak to the folks who want to bring this product to the Arts District, can you explain, because you speak to residents, right? And for some folks, when you think residents, you're thinking they're going to be living there, you know, a full year or many years. What's the concept of residency in this project?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. So the concept with, for this developer, again, it's called Bell Village, their concept is that they would provide, it's a multifamily project for rent, they would not do any type of short-term rentals, however, their shortest might be six months. They believe very strongly that these micro-units, while smaller on the inside of the unit, and it still provides the kitchen and the bedroom and the living space, they really, really put a lot of emphasis on the amenities that are provided within the whole building. Multiple levels of the residential building have multiple different kinds of amenities. Their idea is that you, they want to create a social environment within their project where people come out of their units, and they go into the theater room, or the movie room, or the gym, or there's event kitchens where they'll do, they'll bring in a chef of some kind and do community events there. There's a library, there's coworking spaces. They really put a substantial emphasis on those amenities, so it's not just a building with a lot of small units. That's a different kind of project. For them, it's about the amenities and how you get people out of their units to start talking, and they believe that there's a market for this, certainly with the younger generation that likes to live in that way. And they've proved it in Europe and also in Miami.
Okay. I'm glad, I was going to say what other US city they were building, and thank you for emphasizing it's in Miami, Florida. I'm excited that this project is a possibility in Ward Three, especially as you stated, it would be very close in proximity to many newly opened businesses in the Arts District, and I think they could benefit from the foot traffic that this space would bring with folks coming to it, working there, and wanting to grab a bite to eat, or maybe a glass of wine, or, you know, anything else that they might be needing. And it might spur further growth in that area, which is much needed. So I am going to, if there's any, no more questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. One, this is similar, we were in Chicago, it's a company called Cedar Street that has a product called, they call them flats, somewhat similar to the concept that your client is presenting to us. And it does work, very much, especially in the downtown corridor. They have created a sort of an inter-networking of their flats properties where all of their residents, there are multiple types, that have the ability to utilize their services and amenities for each one of those properties. So, and if you're staying here, you're able to go down by Cashman Field, or you're able to go up to Summerlin, wherever they may be, and so it's an interesting concept. I'll just reiterate again, here's another development that is coming into our corridor that we should be working with a developer to talk about impact fees that will allow us to find other ways to develop other underserved communities, and also about the affordable housing aspect of it. Even if there was a 30%, 60%, 80% AMI, then that would help with the shortage of affordable housing. And we continue to see rents rise, and we continue to see our community are being pushed out. And so we need to, as a city, need to, I think, need to have a sound policy of at least working with developers to provide some type of affordable housing in these units that are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to add, and especially to staff, this is very generational, it's a movement that's going on around the world, definitely around this country. What I see is generations change, that we best be prepared to put into some type of processing, that these will not turn into short-term rentals. Because if you don't fill them up, and you don't rent them out on a regular, I mean, we've been down the road on short-term rentals. So when they're not filling up, as the clientele of the millennials and everybody gets older, and we've watched through 30, 40 years, not all of us, because some of us aren't that old, but you watch this, everybody rushes to the fore, bills, and now these are minis, and we've seen them up in Seattle, that the minis are a great trend today, and then what comes when they're not finding out they're renting them for a long enough period of time. So it's just something to put in, in the minds of planning, and how we go forward with licensing as you move forward, and that's enough for me.
And, Madam Mayor, through you, if I may, to the motion maker, I just would, in your motion, if you could include the deletion of Condition 3 and the amendment of Condition 2, to amend the date stamp to be 10/22/19. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm hopeful it won't, they all stay true to their vision and their product, that they've had work in Germany and in Miami so far, and, you know, we don't want to see it come to what the mayor has described. And to my colleague, Councilwoman Creer's point, I think we as a city do have to have the broader conversation about affordable housing and how we're going to get there together. I don't think it's a one- or two- or three-ward issue. I uniquely think it is a city issue, and I am more than open to continue to have that conversation about how we figure it out, and how we put it together, and how we get there. So, but I'm going to go ahead and make my motion to approve Item 82 on the agenda with the deletion of Condition 3 and amending Condition 2 to include the most recent date stamp of 10/22/19.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on Agenda Item 82. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Dear client, and I would like to ask, at this point, we are going to take a recess for, it's almost 12:30, we'll take a half-hour recess. twelve-thirty, we'll take a half-hour recess, but I'd like to ask our attorney, our counsel, really to take a look at as we move forward with more and more of these smaller units, that we be able to put into all agreements that there's a guarantee they will not go to short-term rentals.
Okay, Mayor, we'll take a look at it. Thank you.
And if you could bring that back to us as a body.
Yes, okay, will do.
Because Christmas future. Okay.
Thanks.
We will stand in recess until one o'clock. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, because some parks won't accept trailers if they're certainly not many years old.
It's all kinds of reasons.
Yeah.
And, uh, no, they're under, uh, totally corporate, they're under, uh... Um, what part of, what's that part of the D S? Uh-huh? Oh, it's under the plant, okay, because it doesn't look like it. Yeah, can I talk with him? Okay. Yeah, so it's his driver, and so he has a damaged tire, he's trying to move it to some other location.
But it doesn't have a...
Oh, we'll see with my...
Yeah, okay, cool.
Yeah, I've got people coming down.
That'd be so good.
Yeah.
And so he says, "We're driven now," so I'm just trying to find Vicky, because all of Vicky was here.
Oh, that's cool.
You don't have her set? Oh, do you? Okay. So they manage to be there. Now, they're, they're talking, one person will say, you know, you're going to lean down because we're in a mobile right now, and then let's, like, sit and make stuff for tomorrow. We're going to go ahead. Okay, we'll, we'll find out again.
Well, it's important here that he has been still taking money from you even though we told him he was going to vacate, and he said, "Oh, kind of right, early November." Because that's when social security comes in, I'm like, nobody, everybody needs to get cleared out, and then, I mean, I feel bad.
You couldn't give the lady the price?
It's not supposed, you're not supposed to recharge if you want, and you're not supposed to be there, and they should have already helped to make those arrangements.
If you get posting on your door, you're not supposed to do that.
Right, right, because normally you need an eviction notice, and the eviction notice has to say not only you, but everyone else probably, probably as well. And it'd be difficult to tag everything. Yeah, we, we all get it, so we're like, hey, Vicky, do you want, hey, I think it's John, or, um, it's, our victory offer is probably of five, five forty two weeks. He said there's some, it's excellent, and we're going to pull those, probably.
Tag, you're it.
Tag, you're it.
Do you know what, do you know what, he's working with, he's, he's saying, he's trying to get rid of the location.
Oh my goodness.
Oh my god.
Okay, everybody, we're back in action.
Hold on, Mayor, hold on.
Holding on. Good, time to breathe. So we start with eighty-three. Ready, go. Okay. We are into Agenda Item eighty-three, Reports and Presentations. So we are starting with a report from city staff regarding the city of Las Vegas workforce trends and development strategies. This is in reference to all, everyone in the world. So, okay, who's boss here? Only one.
Good afternoon. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Scott Adams, City Manager. I'm waiting for our presentation to load up here.
Hopefully, I won't be doing shadow puppets here in a minute. Okay.
So let me just kind of preface this presentation, and this is going to be a team presentation where I'm going to lead it off. I'm going to hand over to Vince Amora, our Deputy Director of HR, who will talk a bit about employment trends, and then hand off to Patsy McFadden, our Manager of Training and Development, to talk about some of the things we're doing in training and development. And the reason why this is important is this is our city workforce, and we are in very, very dynamic times right now. I think you'll see from our presentation that the workforce is changing, and changing rather rapidly. And I'm going to quote the quote of the former hockey great Wayne Gretzky, and I think I've said this before. "We're trying to skate to where the puck's going to be as to where, as, rather than where it is today." And so we're trying to really drill down on what our employee trends are and understand where we need to be as an employer to be an employer of choice in not just Southern Nevada, but even in the United States, because we recruit nationally. I'll start with one of the biggest indicators that we use of where we stand with our employees, and that's employee engagement. We do a periodic, it's been annual, will be every two years, Employee Engagement Survey, where we ask our employees how engaged they are. Now, they self-report this. They tell us how engaged they are, and...
Excuse me? What do you mean by engaged?
Well, how into being an employee with the city of Las Vegas they feel they are. And I will say, we're not alone in doing this. Every major company in the United States does an employee engagement survey.
Anonymously, or you have to sign?
It's anonymous. They won't do it if they have to put their name on it. We've gone through that through the years. We've, you know, whenever it looked like we know who was saying what, we got a very low response rate. So we use an independent firm to survey our employees anonymously, so we will get very honest opinion on how we're doing. And I'm pleased to say that in 2018, the employees that said they are engaged, favorably engaged, was seventy-three percent. Back in twelve, that was only fifty-eight percent. I will tell you that seventy-three percent is almost double the national average for governmental employees. As a city governmental employer, we are highly engaged as a workforce, way more than other governmental entities. In fact, that number is more than most private sector employers. And, well, as you, as we get into our presentation, you'll understand why this is important, to be an employer of choice and to be a productive employer.
Will we see the tool that was used for the research? Or is it reflective, and does it show that it has anything to do with the economy?
It could have been. Back in twelve, clearly, clearly, when we surveyed employees on the heels of layoffs, they weren't as engaged.
Right.
In fact, it was pretty much a downer back then. But as the economy's ramped up, things are getting better, they feel better, and are more engaged. But nevertheless, putting all that aside, everybody was going through that. We're still almost fully double the national average.
Wow.
So it, that, that's very important. There's a lot of different ways we get there, but I think one of the strong commitments we have made is to the concept of organizational health. We have very much simplified to our employees what we are about as employer, what our core purpose is, and I know you all know our purpose being building community to make life better, so they understand what their purpose is as a city employee, what our definition is, that we run the city. And I tell our new employees in our new employee orientation that I don't run the city, this team over here doesn't run the city, the council doesn't run, we all run the city, including every individual employee. And if they let us down, any one individual employee, we all get let down. And so we're one big team running the city. We have re-committed to new values of kind, committed, and smart, and these are values that tie to being a governmental services employer. These are the most important values to a governmental services employer, being kind, being committed, and being street smart. And then we make sure that everything we do is sustainable, iconic, with service value. And then every six to twelve months, we pick a thematic goal that resonates with all of our employees, that we can engage as many employees as possible on. The current one we're on right now is our innovation program, where we're looking at process improvement and innovation, and we're trying to push that into the entire organization. So that's, that's a piece where what we tell our employees, we are trying to be healthy organizationally in addition to just being smart, which a lot of private employers concentrate on, well, all employers, we want to be healthy and smart. And one of the ways we touch our employees, and I bring this up, and there's going to be more in Patsy's presentation, is, you know, through some of the training we do. And I highlight one here, which is our SEAL Training Program. This is a training program I started years ago when I was a Deputy City Manager, and it's called Sponsored Employee Advanced Leadership Training. We recognized then that we were heading into this period where we were going to experience a lot of outmigrations of employees due to retirement, and we better build a strong bench. So what we do is, throughout the organization, ask our directors to sponsor employees to go into rigorous advanced leadership training. The point of it is to build a bench, to build the capacity in leadership and in our executive ranks to take over for the people that are leaving the organization, so they're ready. And so that's just one area that we're engaged with our employees on, and focusing our employees to be ready and engaged in the workplace. With this, I'm going to turn it over to Vince, who's going to talk about, they're doing an HR on some of our workforce trends.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. For the record, Vince Amora, Deputy Director of Human Resources. I have the next nine slides, and...
And if you'll pull your microphone center, perfect.
How's that?
Excellent.
All right. I'll be reviewing the next nine slides, which has some very interesting information regarding national, local, and city trends. As you look at this slide, it represents the U.S. workforce by generation. And as of 2016, you can see that millennials have surpassed Gen Xers as the dominant workforce generation. And when you combine millennials and Gen Xers, that makes up sixty-seven percent of the total U.S. workforce. And we see this as an opportunity to introduce public service to those two generations and get them engaged in what we do on a regular basis. Another interesting fact that we found through our research was that the Bureau of Labor Statistics has reported that workers sixty-five years and older are staying in the workforce longer. We think some of that is due to the result of the recession and them trying to make up on some of their lost investments, but for the most part, it provides us with an opportunity to gain on some institutional knowledge and assist our existing employees with succession planning. As we go to the next slide, we're taking a look at national age group distribution to Southern Nevada age group distribution. And on average, we have a slightly younger workforce than the rest of the nation. Our median age is thirty-six point...
Excuse me, Vince, what, what's the year? This was from a workforce of, at the end of 2017?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So this shows that we have a slightly younger median workforce than the national average, thirty-six point four to thirty-seven point six. So overall, we're not too different from the rest of the nation. So this slide provides a look at our city workforce. And there's, you can see on this sheet that our employee count is at two thousand six hundred and sixty. Our average employee age is forty-four. That hasn't changed in about ten years. We did a look back, and we've been hovering around that, that age. Our average length of service is eleven years, and that hasn't changed dramatically in the last ten years as well. And one of the key points that I think this sheet brings out is that we have a very solid balance of hires between external hires and internal hires for promotional opportunities. And we see this as an opportunity for new ideas and new concepts coming into the city, and for us to try those out with those individuals that are coming from, from the outside. This next slide represents the age group information that we have, and the left slide is our current workforce by age group. And that shows for the past ten years, our workforce is predominantly represented by the forty to forty-nine years of age. The graph on the right shows that compared to ten years ago, we are hiring approximately fifteen percent more employees under thirty. So we are seeing where we are hiring more individuals that are in that, in those predominant generational age groups. This next slide represents our strategy for securing a high-functioning workforce. It's made up of based, it's based on attracting, recruiting, developing, and retaining that workforce. So under the attracting the talent, where I think we're all aware that in Southern Nevada, we don't have a very big problem with having the talent pools available to us, and that our job opportunities are abundant based on lower cost of living, attainable housing, shorter commute time, and competitive wages. Our community is highly competitive when it comes to affordability. This next slide shows us what, what the recruitment strategies are, and those that we're looking, these four bullets that we have delineated here, talk about tech advances, social media, career purpose, and personal and professional growth. New tech and social media has ignited our recruitment efforts. Moving to an online application process, we've doubled our applications that we receive on average in the course of a year from about seven thousand to approximately fourteen thousand five hundred per year. Our text and email job alerts have increased from seventeen hundred to thirty-seven hundred during the course of a year. And partnering with Dave's award-winning and talented communication teams, we're able to reach out to over ninety thousand members via Nextdoor, Twitter, and Facebook. So as an example of one of the initiatives that HR has undertaken, we started a process of one-stop hiring. So this summer, during the Parks and Rec Summer Hire Recruitment, we took approximately two hundred people to, from the interview process to a job offer process, and we were able to offer twenty-nine employees' positions in one day, going through that process. As, later in the summer, as we refined our process for the SafeKey program, we were able to go ahead and hire seventy people in one day. So we're responding to the numbers that are coming to us, and our ability to go ahead and capture the talent right then and there. Also, Gallup Research is telling us that our emerging workforce is not just focused on a paycheck. They're very interested in having meaning and purpose to their jobs, and we believe that our applicants, that public service provides that meaning and purpose. We have over five hundred full-time job titles, so we believe we have the opportunity for people to come into the city and take a look at what the different opportunities are and promote as well. I'm going to skip the development piece of this pie, because Patsy will talk a little bit about it, but I get to talk about routinely employees right now. Our voluntary turnover rate without retirements for fiscal year nineteen was two-point-two percent. That's almost unheard of. Any type of turnover rate in the single digits is, is just fantastic. We have two-point-two without retirements. So we think this is in direct relation to the programs that you approve, that our city manager challenges us to go ahead and develop, and the, and the programs that our employees embrace. I think we're doing a fantastic job in this area. So we never miss an opportunity to make a good impression, so we have our new employee orientation. We've developed a new employee benefit orientation, and we also have a new employee safety orientation. We spend time with all of our new hires to give them an abundant amount of information in each one of these areas. So when you couple that with our premier compensation program, as well as our PERS benefit, we believe we are an employer of choice. We also have a benefits, wellness, and pre-retirement programs that all stack up to any program in the country. Take a look at this next slide. This slide shows our line with, with your priority to become the safest, high-profile city in America. We've amped up our recruitment efforts in public safety. This graph shows recruitment efforts for marshal, corrections officers, and firefighter trainees. So when you look at the numbers, over these four years, over twelve thousand eight hundred applicants, applications have been received. Thirty-three hundred candidates are on our eligible lists, and over two-hundred and ninety employees were selected for public safety academies. That's an average of about seventy-three per year. So this next slide is focusing on our retirement and our forecasting. And in 2015, we began retirement forecasting as a proactive approach to plan for employee retirements. The graph on the left shows a percentage of separations as retirements. We had a slight spike in 2009, because that's when we had our VSP program during the recession. And what we've done is, the data shows that approximately thirty percent of the city's full-time employees populations are eligible to retire in the next five years. And that's without PERS penalties. So what does that mean? There are certain age and service requirements that you have to have. So if an individual goes ahead and leaves the city prior to achieving those particular milestones, they'll be faced with the PERS penalty that will reduce their annual benefit. So what we've done in order to prepare for this is, during our annual staffing plan process, the HR staff meets with all of the departments, and we provide them with a listing of all of the, their employees that are eligible to retire within that timeframe. And we, we share that information with them, and this allows us to plan for the appropriate population of eligibility lists, as well as to help us coordinate with our PJC program, our Position Justification Committee. So that includes my part of the presentation, and I'll turn it over to Patsy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman, Councilmembers. Patsy McFadden, Choate, Training and Development Manager. And I just want to highlight very briefly some of the things that we do as part of the Training and Development Team. First of all, we have a very close partnership with HR and our Information Technology Group. As part of the new employee onboarding, we provide organizational health and the initial IT training, making sure everybody has their logins, that they understand what different programs we have, as well as we talk about information security, what kind of things to click on, and what kind of things not to click on, and those, those types of new employee information. Our primary functions, training, coaching, and facilitation are all aimed at the development sector of our, of our graph, because we know that if we have a low turnover, like two-point-two percent, as Vince said, we really have to concentrate a lot on developing employees to keep them fresh, relevant, and capable to serve our customers and our citizenry. Just highlight some of our current programs. The way we get our current programs, city managers, department directors, and different teams around the city will let us know what their current needs are, and then we go to develop programs. The two that I want to highlight today are Supervisor School. That came out of an Employee Training and Development Plan that was done by all departments. We started that this year, and we have almost a hundred supervisors that have completed the training or are near to completion next month. We're going to plan to have two more of those next, next year, so that we can make sure our supervisors have the tools they need and the knowledge they need to make sure that they're doing the best job coaching and developing their own staff members. We also have an Innovation Academy. We just had our pilot in October. As Scott mentioned, we have an innovation thematic goal right now, and we're trying to bring as many people in as possible from all levels of the workforce to get trained in how to use tools to improve processes with a special emphasis on customer experience. We want to make sure that our customers get the best experience, that there's not long wait times. And so far, we've put, I think, about fifty people through the program, and we have another class in December, and we have a schedule of classes all the way through December of next year, to try to, to try to up the numbers of people who are trained in that. The only other thing I'd like to mention is custom learning. One of the nice things about having Training and Development staff, we have three full-time and one part-time staff member. Luckily, we also have about fifty adjunct faculty, many of whom are sitting right here, that help with the programs. We are able to answer needs that come up as workforce needs change, new skills are needed. We can just ramp up and come in and do a training pretty quickly, because our training staff is pretty experienced. My last slide has to do with the 2030 projection. What we've found through our research is that by 2030, some things are going to still be the same as they are now, with a special emphasis on ability to learn continuously. We've heard of lifelong learners, we've heard of rapid learning, but the faster things change, the more it's incumbent on us to be adaptable and help our, in a workforce, be adaptable. We're going to have to have the ability to learn and leverage technology innovations. It's one thing to learn the technology, but then to be able to think in new ways about how to use those to provide better customer service to our internal and external customers. Also, social and emotional skills and critical thinking are going to continue to be very important. The more artificial intelligence we use, like people doing things in an online manner, the more important it is that our employees who do interact with the public are very skilled in the things to do with emotional intelligence. We have two upcoming programs, Project Management Professionals Training. Again, this was a desire to standardize how we do project management in the city, so that'll be coming up in the early 2020. And we'll be consenting to do Microsoft Office 365 and related applications like Teams that are also proving to be very helpful in reducing the number of emails, making sure that we're not spending time looking for something we thought we sent, they're all in one place. And we'd invite any of your team members who haven't had a chance to have that training to, to attend, to see if it's something that would be helpful. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Scott.
So our focus, and this is the summary, is our HR and organizational development programs really are about competitive wages and benefits. We want to be competitive. If this, in this day and age, with the incredible retirement exodus that's going on, it's not just in the city of Las Vegas, it's all over the United States. It's in the public and private sectors. We want to be competitive. We want to have our employees' well-being a high priority. We want to have engaged employees, and we want to create a positive culture of organizational health. Now, if we do all this, we end up having happy, engaged, productive employees. We build our bench strength, we have low voluntary turnovers. Vince said, we are at two-point-two percent, almost unheard-of numbers, and we have incredible efficiencies and cost reductions. At the end of the day, it is about business. It is a good business practice. Anecdotally, we are running substantially below employment levels in our non-public safety functions, the levels we were at pre-recession. Yet, the amount of work we're doing as a city since the recession, due to the growth we've experienced as we've ramped out over the last ten years, has increased dramatically. We are a much, much more productive workforce, and I would attribute that increase in productivity to all the things that we've talked about, of creating a positive culture, a productive culture. And I just have to underscore, this is good business and good management practice. So that, that is a summary. We just wanted to give you a sense of where our workforce stands, what we're doing to engage our workforce, and kind of where we think employee trends are heading. So with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? I, for one, would love to see the tool that went out to the employees.
Yep.
In fact, I would recommend it that every Councilmember have a copy.
Absolutely.
Just to see, because I think there's a great deal of involvement in life and in all aspects of our community and other ones before, that for the next tool, whoever's engaged might add some of what we see into the question of your life satisfaction at the city of Las Vegas.
Sure. We, we do it very consistently from survey to survey, so that we can accurately see trending. We ask pretty much the same questions in pretty much the same way, so that we can see where we're trending, either up or down. And we do it by function. We, we don't, and again, I get, I get to, we don't divulge any individual data.
Right.
Because we, we've, we make sure that our employees know that is absolutely, that we're not divulging any individual's information. We, we report it at the aggregate level, at, by department and citywide. So we'd be more than glad to provide that information.
Well, and too, I think the interesting thing is what you said, because if you start changing the tool and what you're doing, you can't compare, you can't compare data, one, that's different from the same research that's been done on the previous one. So it's just interesting, and I think we'd all enjoy seeing it.
Sure.
Then you can ask us how we feel.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. This is a report only, so no vote is necessary on it. And we will move now on to Agenda Item eighty-four. This is a report from Scott Adams, City Manager, on emerging issues, and this is in reference to all wards.
Scott Adams, City Manager. I just had a few items that I wanted to highlight in my Emerging Issues Report. The first is, you recently appointed me to the AB-73 Committee on Homelessness.
Right.
I attended my first meeting last week. It was interesting. I intend to be, intend to represent our city well in that process, to ask a lot of questions and really hope play a leadership role in that process. There are a couple of things that came out, though, that, first, there was a pretty healthy discussion about the HMIS system, which is the Homeless Management Information System, which is the federally required system to track engagement with homeless individuals as they seek services throughout the region. There were a lot of questions about how the policies that drive that program, and what we found is, our continuum of care regulates our HMIS system more than required by federal law, federal regulations. So we're overly regulatory in how we apply HMIS. In fact, we learned that there's very limited public safety access to the system. So we're going to be having, or scheduling for a future meeting, a more in-depth presentation and discussion on that system, because it is the base... and discussion on that system, because it is the basis of information about how our homeless community engages with all the services and housing and things that are important to them and important to our ending homelessness in Southern Nevada. The second thing, and I brought this up, and I'm going to continue to push it through the committee, is, in the research I've done going into the committee, I'm not able to find any quantifiable numbers or goals that identify what the gaps are in demand for homeless housing, everywhere from shelter beds all the way through permanent supportive housing, and everything in between, bridge housing, transitional housing, all the different kinds of housing that are needed to support homelessness. We do not have that quantified, through point-in-time counts, estimates, or any other way. In fact, it came, a question was asked of the staff of the continuum of care, and they said they're working on it. So, that suggests that they don't exist right now, and that's something I believe we need to pull out of that process, so that when we're done, we can say, over the next three years, over the next five years, here's what the demand is for all the kinds of housing. If housing first is truly where we need to go with homelessness, we ought to be able to know what those gaps are, set annual goals for it, as a region come together and try to accomplish those annual goals, but right now, they don't exist. So, that, I'm going to lead, try to push for that, coming out of that process, because I feel like we're all building housing, and we don't have, we're not trying to reach a goal. We don't know what the goal is, and I think we need a goal. So, that, it's been a good process, and I'll continue to represent the city well. I want to report something else on a higher note. We have been working with our downtown stakeholders, as expressed through the Downtown Alliance, on a new branding campaign for downtown. As you know, as you drive around, you see a lot of cranes, you see a lot of cones. We're in the middle of a billion-dollar-plus boom, and there's probably another two to three more that are going to be a million, billion dollars worth of development coming. And so, there's a sense that we need to do a better job promoting downtown, and I will tell you that at the next mixer of the Downtown Alliance, they will be teasing us with this branding campaign. So, for any of you that are going to the mixer, stay tuned. I think you're going to, you're going to see a teaser of what's yet to come in terms of downtown branding. And then, finally, I just want to remind you and the public that we've set aside February 26th, from 8:00 to 2:00, as the date for you to conduct your workshop to set new priorities. We're working on the logistic details of that workshop, facilitator, where it's going to be and how we're going to make that happen, but this is following on your request of staff. If you remember, I presented our progress in achieving the last set of six priorities of council, and you directed staff to set up a process to develop new priorities. We set aside February 26th as a date to have a workshop for that very purpose, so.
And have you notified the council staff offices, so it should be on calendar?
It should be on your calendars, and that's why I'm bringing it up. We did, we did attempt to get it on everybody's calendars. Hopefully, it's still on your calendars, and I just wanted to bring that up, because that, that's going to be an important date. And with that, that is the end of my emerging issues report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Adams? Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go on to Agenda Item 85, Report by Mr. Jonas R. Peterson, President and CEO of Las Vegas Global Alliance, LVGE, regarding business development services being provided to existing businesses located in and new businesses relocating to the city of Las Vegas. This is in reference to all wards. Hello? Hello?
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman, Members of City Council, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. It's been said often, including from colleagues for our partner organization, Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, that economic development is a team sport, and so with that, I'm proud to introduce my colleague and partner, Jonas Peterson, of the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, who's going to give you an overview of some of the things that his organization has been doing to support economic development in the region and also in the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager Adams. Again, Jonas Peterson, CEO of the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance. Pleasure to be with you to share a brief progress report this afternoon. I'll dive straight into it. First, want to show you our metrics for 2019. What you're looking at is our target goals there in the middle, and then our year-to-date progress. Let me draw your attention to just a couple. Our target for assisted job creation for the year is 3,200 jobs. We are ahead of that currently, with 3,700 jobs assisted here in Southern Nevada. So, we're having another, another big year for job creation. The average wages, if you go about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see a row for average wages. Our target here was $22 per hour. We've been slowly raising this target year after year. I'm pleased to report that assisted companies across the region are reporting an average wage of over $27 per hour. Lots more metrics on there for you to review at your leisure, but let me move fairly quickly here through our slide deck. A few examples of projects we've worked on with, with the team at City of Las Vegas, more on the way, but you've got generally a lot of technology firms. Renhead, a startup technology firm, projected to create 50 jobs. Argus is an artificial intelligence firm. They manage security cameras located in the city of Las Vegas. Unified Compliance, creating more jobs. Also in Las Vegas, they help out companies with managing their business and regulatory compliance issues. I want to say a special thank you for the partnership. So, part of the reason why we're here is to share an update on the work that we do together. In my opinion, the partnership is working. Thank you to Bill and the team in particular, but Councilman Knutson, City Manager Adams, for serving on our board as well. We do a lot of things together. City was with us on lead generation trips this past year to Chicago, LA, and London. Monthly, we download both teams on active companies that are looking at growing or relocating to the city, so our teams are working together on that consistently. Strategy, lots underway here, including a new comprehensive economic development strategy. I'll tell you more about that in a little bit. We participate in growing existing firms, reaching out to companies within the city, providing them with access to resources, and getting the word out to the local audience through a variety of events. You can see some pictures of our partnership. Going forward, some key initiatives that are underway that I want to make sure you know about. The first is that new comprehensive economic development strategy. This is the regional economic development strategy for all of Southern Nevada that we file with the federal government, not just on behalf of LVGA, but on behalf of hundreds of partner organizations that will help us build this plan together, including City of Las Vegas. We are well underway, expected with the final version of this report, this strategy, by the end of first quarter next year, so hopefully March. It's a big, big lift for us. Last time, we had a new SEDS was back in 2012, so this is a big upgrade to our strategy. Want to let you know that our Outlook event, this is an economic forecasting event with UNLV, is scheduled for December 3rd in the morning at M Resort. Thanks to input from City of Las Vegas, we'll be focusing on technology this year. So, it's a technology forecast and strategy session at the Outlook event coming up in December. A big project for us that we are currently rolling out with community leaders is Workforce Blueprint 2.0. What is this document? It's a new workforce strategy, designed to get us past all the anecdotal conversations about what a particular business or industry may need from our workforce, and instead, to quantify the regional needs. So, we actually forecast through 2026, the occupations and skill sets needed to support our economy, and then we identify gaps or surpluses as well. Why do we do this? We are seeing a war for talent underway. The level of competition from nearby states for talent is increasing. In fact, we're seeing other markets launch talent attraction campaigns alongside their business recruitment campaigns. This wasn't just LVGA. We do everything with partners. I want to acknowledge Workforce and Connections and Metro Chamber for leading the charge on the blueprint with us. Also, from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Bob Potts and his research team, and all the education partners you see on the slide here were involved in the creation and delivery of the blueprint. If I jump straight to a top 10 list, there's way more than this included in the blueprint, but here's our list of the top 10 in-demand occupations that we believe will support our economy going forward. You can see software developers was not on the list two years ago, now is at the top of our list, because of their importance to our target industries going forward. General and operations managers, no surprise that nurses continue to be in the top 10 list. You can see civil engineers, financial managers, aircraft techs, respiratory therapists, and electrical and engineering techs round out the top 10 occupations in demand. We take it a step further. On this slide, you can see the gaps or surpluses. In many cases, gaps. This is the difference between what we're training through our education system and the demand we're seeing from employers. So, annually, we know that we are coming up 200 software developers short, over 1,000 short for operations managers, over 700 short for nurses. The list goes on. That means we've got some gaps to close. It's all about alignment. That's the purpose of the blueprint. Also included in this report, though, is a workforce report card that we're going to publish once a year to track our overall progress. Not going to go into all the detail here, but I do want to tell you that we believe the workforce is generally improving. Most indicators are moving in the right direction, but we're not where we need to be yet. If you look at K through 12, for instance, AP test passage rate and ACT scores are both moving up, but we are still lagging behind national levels. If you go into talent and training as a category, you can see that average wages are rising. We're seeing a surge in apprenticeships, which I think is good, although our starting number is really small in Southern Nevada, but again, moving in the right direction. Percentage employed in target industry, 27.5% currently moving up. We have a ways to go there, and hope that continues to rise. If you look at the category of post-secondary education, a similar trend. The number of graduates, associate degree or bachelor's degree, the number is rising. The percentage in our population is also rising, yet we lag behind national averages. One indicator of particular importance is in the upper right here, recent graduates employed in Nevada. Unfortunately, this statistic is going down. This is the point of the blueprint, is that we want that indicator to go up, so that more of our graduates are employed in those occupations in demand. It's all about alignment, so we're training the workers we need to support our economy. Big picture takeaways, quality of our workforce is improving, we're generally going in the right direction, still not where we need to be. That competition for talent is consistently rising. It's the top issue that employers ask us about at LVGA, and we're seeing it increase in importance. Our population is growing rapidly. So are new industries. For instance, logistics, manufacturing, and distribution is growing at roughly five times the previous growth rate we've seen over the last five years. It is surging in job creation. For the first time ever, our top, a majority of our top in-demand occupations do not require a bachelor's degree. More so than ever, we're seeing the need for training programs and certificates, for instance, but for, a majority of them do not require a bachelor's degree. We believe we need to continue to focus on alignment and growing our capacity to train our own workers. Since we have a lot of those gaps, one of the things we want to do, in addition to training our own, is to recruit talent from other markets. In order to do that, we're launching a Quality of Life campaign and a Talent Attraction campaign called Here You Can. You're going to be hearing a lot about this campaign. We are really excited about it. It's actually beta testing right now in Southern California, specifically aimed at skilled workers that will help us close those workforce gaps. And to close out my, my presentation here, I've got a quick video, it's a hype video of what you can expect from the Here You Can campaign. And I, yeah, take a look.
Excellent.
All right. Again, thank you for the partnership.
Excellent. That's excellent. A great logo. Here you can, like that. Excellent. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Wow. I mean, it just, from the day LVGA grew out of the old NDA, it's really made some wonderful strides and exciting, and we know that 70 to 80% of the population lives down here, and the money comes from down here. So, hopefully, LVGA will begin to get some of that into the whole state, look at what business is doing, that there has to be some better equity on all of it. But you're doing a great job. So, comments, questions? Yes, Councilman Knutson.
Mayor, thank you, and Mr. Peterson, thanks so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be on the LVGA board, and I wanted to highlight my experience in the last meeting, because we had a great presentation for Mr. Aguero about the opportunity around sports medicine in particular. And as I think about the medical district and my role in helping to create and support the growth of the medical district, I come back to the mayor's comments from a couple of years ago around the reimbursement rates for healthcare professionals, and that's where I see an opportunity with the LVGA, and my role in particular is defining, defining the environment, and then creating the environment where the healthcare sector can grow to meet the demands of our growing population. So, that's, that's the area that I'm most excited to work on and bridge, bridge the gap between the city of Las Vegas and LVGA. So, I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming before us. Happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays to you. We appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. Warren. We didn't do the same, but it's exciting, and hopefully, too, you'll continue the message to have our legislature meet annually and not every other year, because it's really holding us back, especially in the area of economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to 86. Set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings in dangerous building or nuisance letter abatements.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are now into our second and final, citizen participation. Citizen participation public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to point out that I've been noticing the new signs.
Name, name, name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Daniel Brayston, City of Las Vegas. I've been noticing the new signs on the traffic poles for the crossing. They're looking pretty good, so please, I appreciate that. I do want to talk about Republic. I do want to tip the hat to the drivers that drive down all those narrow alleys and pick up the trash. It's phenomenal that they do that. I was concerned that the levy was only going to be on residents. I believe commercial, government, and nonprofits create trash. I thought they should have been included. The way I understand it is, we approve five years, and if China gets back into the business, we're going to continue to pay that money for the rest of those five years. I thought it should have been changed. We're familiar with the broken windows concept for a community. I think the other big one is graffiti and dirty dumpster. is graffiti and dirty dumpsters, and I believe that Republic should be asked that their drivers post when they've got burned dumpsters, and once a month, they dispatch a pickup truck with a spray and to paint those. I like the idea of having meetings in this chamber. We have, according to the Google, we have seven billionaires in Las Vegas, and I'd like to hear one of them speak once a month, starting with Mr. Steve Wynn, and I encourage that we ask him to speak more frequently, that people understand where this city came from. I stopped by a post office twice, and I've seen the same homeless person there, so what I'm going to ask the congressman is to come up with a policy where we post something in public buildings saying, "You can't sleep here," and if you do see somebody sleeping here, who do we call? Do we call 911, 411, 211? Who do we call? So I'll be passing that on to the congressman, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, Lisa Marie.
Who's Anthony?
Oh, okay, then we have Anthony Casabianca.
Yes, hi, Madam Mayor, Council, I finally got a place, we're my cousin, so, hey, I got you and Oscar Christmas gifts, so.
Oh, my, thank you.
They're tall for Oscar, and there's a necklace I just made up right now, just before I left my house.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and, yeah, so everything's, I guess, going good, let's hope it lasts, I got it with my cousin, so, hopefully, you know, it'll be good. The landlord seems to be okay, but that's what's going to happen, the last one, you know, but hopefully, it'll go all right. And thank you again, and happy holidays, and happy Hanukkah, and everything, and just things for Oscar and stuff.
Thank you very much, very kind of you.
If anything's wrong with the necklace, just, I'll give your, I'll call again and get my phone number, and I'll fix it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Everybody have a nice holiday.
Lisa Marie, 3985, Pramble Place, Boise, Idaho. Mayor, Council. These lists of questions will be emailed to you by tomorrow. How many juveniles are missing in the state of Nevada? How many juveniles are missing in Clark County? How many juveniles are missing in Las Vegas? Currently, through the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, it is noted that you have 63 children that are missing. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children only takes incoming calls. The FBI reported through the NCIC, 2018, 424,066 children are missing. You know, Mayor, I meant what I said to you, and I hold my words. It takes very strong people to stand up, not afraid of judgment, and I am not a person that is afraid of judgment. Because of what all of you are doing, I have dedicated hours and hours and hours into your state. I just got off the phone with Aaron Ford's Missing Persons Department, John Monroe, and he said to me, "We don't have an accountability of the children that are missing in Nevada." Whatever your budget is, I will help you with your budget. You can start with Las Vegas, let's figure out how many children are not only missing in Las Vegas, but in the state. But I've never met a mayor in the whole entire United States that I felt that had the strength that you have. As of today, I am running for sheriff in Ada County, Idaho. I'll be running for president in 2024, I was one of the candidates in 2016. My daughter was molested by my son. My son is currently a sheriff. My son is not okay. So what drove the Amber Alert? What drove John Walsh? I love each of you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I am going to then close the final public comment, and we'll move on to Agenda Item 88, which I believe is for our council member recognition. Comments made by individual council persons during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. So let's start down with Councilwoman Diaz, and just go right on down, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have too much to announce, I think that the holidays are starting to catch up to us. I know that I have many family members coming into town already, ahead of next week, so I just want to take this time to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving, make sure that you all gobble till you wobble, and I know it's one of my favorite holidays because there's an amazing spread of food, but most importantly, it's a time that we reflect on all the wonderful things that have happened to us, and most importantly, you know, being blessed and having family beside us, I think, is one of the greatest blessings. So to my Ward 3 family, happy Thanksgiving, and we will be, my team and I will be partaking in a cleanup at the gateway to the city this weekend, and I look forward to anybody who has time to contribute, to come out and support us, we can, we'll post things on our social media, so that's it for me today.
Thank you. Councilman Knudsen.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Much like the councilwoman, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot of events coming up in the ward, we're doing a lot of senior males, and so I'm grateful for the community partners who are helping us sponsor those events in the Ward 1 senior centers. And I'd also like to point out that there's another Brews with Brian, it's tomorrow night at the Tap House, 5589 West, at West Charleston at 5:30 PM. It's a great opportunity to come and share what's on your mind, things you need us to work on in the ward, and meet some new neighbors. And I did have a question, Brews with Brian, it can be both an alcoholic drink in the evening or coffee in the morning, so depending on your pleasure, I'm available either way, so looking forward to that tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving, and I'm very excited for the next week of all the Thanksgiving festivities that we'll be doing up in Ward 6 with our seniors and our constituents, and so happy, happy Thanksgiving. Second, don't forget, tomorrow is our next Golden Knights game, so go Knights, go. We are preparing for our Christmas Fantasy Forest, and so I just want to make sure all the parents know, the first weekend in December, bring your cameras, because Santa will be at the Floyd Lamp Park, so you can take pictures. He'll be there every Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, so bring your cameras, take photos, get your holiday cards together, and get them out. I am very excited to announce that we found Evelyn Robles, this beautiful, yeah, this beautiful young 14-year-old. So she is found, she is no longer a missing juvenile. However, we are going to be looking for George Sanchez. He's 17-year-old male, light brown hair, brown eyes, he's Hispanic. George was last seen in the area of Big Creek Court and Tamaron Cliffs in Las Vegas. He was last seen wearing a white t-shirt and a gray dress shirt and black jeans. So please, if you know where George is, please call Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. We have to find George, and we also have to find Paul. Paul Chavez Jr., he's 14, he's a male, brown hair, brown eyes, he's Hispanic. He was last seen in the area of Palo Verde and Dooley Drive in Henderson. Please call Henderson Police at 702-267-5000, or Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. So let's find George and Paul. Our core door of hope, you know, as we work on our homeless success stories, I have to just tell you, I'm very excited about Harlan. He's a single father who recently just regained custody of his four children. He started as a volunteer at the courtyard in 2017, and was hired as operation worker in 2018. Through his employment, he was able to secure and maintain a stable living environment, which allowed the courts to return his children into his custody. And one more big, exciting event that had happened this past weekend is Mr. and Mrs. Willis, so congratulations to Savannah and Kyle Willis on their wedding.
Beautiful. Beautiful. A very happy mom and mother-in-law, right there on my right and your left. And so we go down to our Councilwoman Seaman, who's a world traveler, but returned to us safely, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm looking forward to this Saturday, where everyone can join me between 9:00 and 10:00 at Charlie's Lakeside, so we can break bread together. It's open to the public, and I hope that folks out there will come and join us. It's our breakfast buzz and Ward 2 biz, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to eat and talk about business in Ward 2. Then I'd like to welcome everyone, our Small Business Sundays has become a great success, where we are going out to businesses in Ward 2 and talking about your business, so please contact us at the number 702-229-2420, if you would like us to come out and film your business. Now, I'm going to encourage the fine constituents of Las Vegas to open their home and look at maybe adopting some of our animals over at the Animal Foundation. I don't know if I can do this every week, I might be taking a lot of dogs home. So first, we have Jake, and he's a neutered male, one-year-old, and he is just adorable. And then we have Haley, who's a spayed female cat at eight months old, and she is really beautiful. And then we have Mickey, oh, he's breaking my heart, seven years old, 9.5 pounds, and he is up for adoption. And then, last but, no, yeah, last but not least, we have Cronut, neutered male, four years old, and he is really beautiful. So please, if you would like to adopt any of these gorgeous animals, contact the adoption department with the number up here on the screen, 702-955-5901, or you can email them at adoptions@animalfoundation.com. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Seaman. Just want to thank everybody who came out for the Veterans Parade, or who's working with our veterans over this past holiday. It just really was a beautiful turnout of gratitude and appreciation for their sacrifice and dedication to our country. And the holiday season, as we know, next week is Thanksgiving, which everyone up here has mentioned, and we have a lot of exciting events that are going on in the community. Christmas tree lighting ceremony at Opportunity Village will be on Friday, November 29th at 5:30 PM. The Great Santa Run on Saturday, December 7th, kicking off at 8:00 AM downtown, off of Las Vegas Boulevard and Fremont Street. And just know that everyone should have a safe and happy holiday season. We want to thank everyone that's worked so hard on these council meetings, our technology behind the one-way screen over there, no, I can see over there, look at that, you're almost invisible, but the rest of the team over there, and thank you too, to obviously our marshals, our city clerk, and all our staff, and of course, my colleagues. Our next meeting will be December 4th, at Wednesday, December 4th, right here at 9:00 AM. So again, happy holidays, be safe, thank you for giving to others who are less fortunate or food deprived, Three Squares doing a big drive right now, it really could make a difference. So thank you all, and be safe and be happy, and thank you, PIO always, thank you. We are adjourned.